Good evening and welcome to the West Seneca School Board Work Session of September 29th. Let's do the pledge, and Jody, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, tonight we have three presentations. We have the Capital Improvement Project, which I'm sure everybody is interested in listening to the update on that, the Transportation Department, and the educational updates. So for Young and Right, you want to come up and do your presentation? They also have a slide presentation for this.
I'm going to leave the mask on, but I'm Christina Weber from Young and Right. I'm the project manager on the architectural side. This is Alan Zawiski on the CM side of Phase 1 of our project. So we're both going to just be going back and forth, talking about the project. So we have an update on the Capitol Outlay, the past one and the present one, the Smart Schools Act, and then the Capitol Project of Phase 1 and 2. So our Capitol Outlay for the 1920 school year was the drinking fountains at West Middle School. That went really well. The construction was smooth. And if you can see a picture, we were able to put ADA and bottle filler water coolers in. Probably about half of them were replaced in this project. The rest will be replaced in the Capitol Project. Bean, oh, sorry. Yes, so there was, there was a little bit. So there were old ceramic ones that were just recessed into the wall. Per ADA code, we can't have a protrusion into the corridor more than four inches. So we had to reset them back a little further. But they look really nice, and the construction went smooth. So for this year's Capitol Outlay Project, the pool piping at West Middle was selected by the district. So we are currently doing our field verification. I think the fee proposal is on the docket for tonight. So we're getting that one rolling, and that one should finish up in the spring. Smart Schools Bond Act, this is the technology project, cabling, wiring. It has, the project has been approved by SED for permit, and it requires a second approval by the SSBA Review Board, which was received. We are meeting with the design team in the district tomorrow, actually, to discuss some of the scope. Some of the teaching methods have changed with this new school year. So we're just reviewing that with the district before we put it out to bid, to make sure it's what the district needs at this point. And then we're looking to bid this project late this year, maybe receiving bids early next year for construction to start next year. Okay, so the big project, the Capitol Improvement Project, which is voted on in December of 18, $75.5 million. We are in construction of Phase 1, which Alan will go through, and we're in design of Phase 2. So right now, on the, I guess the center column, is everything kind of the per-phase that we blocked out for the referendum. And if you see, our bid numbers actually came in under budget. We're still holding a contingency. So right now, we're about almost $4.5 million under budget. So with that, we are able to potentially use that in the next phase for some of the alternates that we've been discussing with the user groups as we find the facility's needs. And there's a few extra scope items. We're able to possibly use that savings from Phase 1 and move it to the future phases. I will turn it over to Alan to kind of go through some of the Phase 1 change orders, updates.
In Phase 1, which I am the CM for, the turf portion of the project at both East, West, and then some of the masonry scope work over at both schools, as well as the interior doors at West Middle School. Some additional items that we were able to pick up because we had the lower bid amount, smoothing out the road, straightening it out, which is going to help out with Phase 2, picked up some additional turf lettering over at East High School, and then additional lighting of bleachers and whatnot behind the home bleachers on the north side of the East High School. Other things that just sort of came up along the way that we're able to fit into the project right now.
So I do want to note that Phase 1 has actually gone very smooth. Not only were we under budget, we're actually under what we would typically see in change orders and percentage-wise. So the roof project, which we've been handling, has had two proposals. They were about $5,300, and the whole project was $3.6 million. So it is a very low percentage, and they were all unforeseen conditions. So Alan and Paul, who, the CM team, have been working well with the contractors, and we've seen some really good numbers for this project. So if the contingency is left over, which we're holding, that money can also go to the next phase.
So just right now, in this project, currently, we're below 1% in overall change orders to date.
So this kind of just outlines some of the constructions, the schedule for all four phases. So right now, you can see we're in the construction of Phase 1. We're actually a little bit ahead of schedule because they did start West Senior this year. It was originally slated for next year. So that might allow a sooner playing, start of play on that field. And then we're about in the middle of Phase 2 design, looking to go to construction in 2022 for that one. And then the high schools for Phase 3 will continue once we submit our Phase 2 to SED for permit. I pushed this too many times. There we go. So just an update on the roof. I know it's a little harder to see, but the top picture is a before picture. It was a built-up ballast roof, so that's the stone on top of the roof. We were able to do a restoration. So we were able to leave the existing roof system, but remove the stone, add a little bit of insulation coverboard, and then they could put the roof system right over. So you're still able to get your warranty and still save some of the existing roof, which saves money and allows the district to get what they need.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you putting another stone roof on there or a different type of roof?
Nope. So that white roof is actually a fluid-applied roof. So they kind of just roll it right on. So it's a lot easier to patch if you ever got a hole and you're able to flash up. So it does, it is a little bit, it could be a more expensive product, but the, it's kind of evened out by being able to save on keeping your existing roof and then any type of patching or flashing that's required. So it is very, it's a good system. We've used it a lot of places. So we also did the restoration at the, which is a PVC roof, is like a membrane roof. There's no stone. It's just kind of a membrane, at West Middle and West Elementary. Those ones, they were able to put the fluid applied right over the top of it. So that was, again, they've replaced wet insulation, so all insulation should be dry. And they will rescan it when they're done. And then they were able to flash up everything with the fluid applied. So everything went really well. There was, like I said, there was only two proposals, and it was because there was some loose membrane that was in unforeseen condition. So.
Is it, are we removing the insulation or just replacing? Like, will this help with just the building staying any cooler or warmer? I know the white roof helps, right?
Yes, there's kind of studies like back and forth. We replaced in kind the insulation. The, our value of the roof has gone up, but it's not necess, it's kind of an envelope system that needs to happen for, like, just replacing the roof isn't really helping the rest.
No, no, okay.
So, yeah. But it definitely, by replacing wet insulation, you actually increase your R-value because wet insulation isn't insulated. So. So Alan, take it over from here.
Just some of the pictures here, just some of the new corridor doors. This is at West Middle and West Senior. I believe there's going to be more added in the next Phase 2 as well.
These were added to, sorry, to be able, for the district to be able to lock down certain wings of the building. So we did add it to the Phase 1, but the remaining doors to lock down those parts will be added in the future phases as we get to those buildings.
And here we can, we see the, I think, one of the original proposal drawings of the, of the East High School. I'm assuming everybody's familiar with the project, as well as with the masonry restoration around the building. The masonry restoration has been completed, and right now, we are in the process of buttoning up the turf field. The field has already been turned over to the district for use. So both teams from East and West are using the field now. These are some photos from the, some of the drones we had over. The one on the right is shot during the day. We just had our drone from our company out there just to get some aerial footage and get shots of the, at the site. And the ones on the right from the night, that was taken by our electrical contractor when they were testing out the photometrics of the system itself, the lighting system. And again, just some other overall shots of the site. Right now, we're in the process of just finishing up that lower left corner of, on the left photo, which is the parking lot and returning up to the. To the school. But other than that, everything else that you see is tan, is now, like, grass is now growing in, and all the hydro seed is in place. And then obviously, you can see, you know, everything else has been completed. And right now, if anybody's noticed, we've mobilized over to West High School. Green Hour Development, or I'm sorry, Green Hour Blacktop is there in full force to get a jump on it since we have the opportunity this fall. Right now, they're in full mode of stripping the top soil and readying it so we can complete a big chunk this fall and into the early spring.
Does anyone have any questions before we move on to Phase 2? Overall, Phase 1 has gone great. It's been very smooth, especially with these times, you would kind of think different. But it has been very, it was a very good project.
And sort of, sorry, but speaking to that, the district, the district allowed us to keep moving through the pandemic. So we haven't missed any time throughout this whole duration.
So Phase 2 are for the middle schools. Right now, we're in design, like I had mentioned. The scope of these for both buildings includes roof replacement or restoration, so the same thing we did in Phase 1. Masonry restoration, exterior door replacement, intruder door hardware at all the classrooms, replacing exterior-mounted lighting with LED fixtures, some miscellaneous cabling, data closet, clock systems that coincide with the Smart Schools project, replacing the drinking fountains with the bottle fillers like we did in the Capitol Outlay, and some miscellaneous mechanical, electrical plumbing upgrades throughout. So for West Middle, in addition to what I had just mentioned, we have a music wing addition and renovation of the existing music rooms, a new secure entry and renovation of the main office area, and a gym renovation, including replacement of bleachers, adding more safety wall pads because there's only a little bit. Yep. And then some of the window cranks are broken, and just fixing up those. So we've been working with the district in various user groups for each type of scope that we're working on. So we sat down with a group of the Ensemble Teachers Band Chorus Orchestra, along with Matt, Larry, and Diane, actually, has been part of them, and worked with the district to see what type of space they're looking for. So we wanted a wish list of everything, and we tried to incorporate as much as we could. So what you're seeing right now is kind of the end result. We're still working out a few things, but we were, we're just about ready to kind of move to the next step of our construction documents. So the new addition, which is the top part, there's a band ensemble on the right with some offices, rehearsal space, a toilet room down the center, and then the chorus on the left. Now, having the chorus in the addition allows us to create a ceiling height that students could be up on risers and not be literally hanging from the ceiling. So that was one of the reasons that parts in the addition. And then below that, in the existing building, is orchestra, able to give them some in-store, in-room storage in office, and I think enough space for their ensemble in there. And then the very bottom, we made a general music classroom because right now, they have a lot of teachers and very little spaces to actually teach in. So that then frees up the stage for whatever use it needs to do. So each ensemble has their own space, which is the main goal.
So we only put the additions all for music?
Correct.
No classroom additions, correct?
Correct. And the chorus can also double as a classroom if needed down the future. So I guess any of them could, but.
But the music teachers teach classes in those classrooms.
Well, I was just looking at possibly evening off the 5th grade. You know what I'm saying? And I, this hall, I asked if they were adding classrooms to it.
So they do need classrooms.
So this is our proposed music wing, like, the exterior shell of the music wing. We worked with the district, had a few ideas, and this one is kind of playing off of the existing facade. If you're aware, it kind of has these bookends with some green stone down the front. And West is also trying to move away from the green stone, so we'll be fixing that part up and allowing it to kind of fit into the existing building, but also see it as like this nice music addition that you have on the front of your building. And then the bottom one is kind of a view of the chorus room. So it's kind of playing off both of the band and the existing building. So one of the other scope items is secure entry and relocating the visitor parking to be at the bus loop area. So we've kind of created a canopy for this area to pronounce the entrance to visitors. This is one of those added scope items that we are hoping to use the Phase 1 money for. At the very least, we can work on creating the, kind of the wall portion, if you see that, to just pronounce the entrance and then work towards a canopy if it doesn't fit in the budget.
So that's in the front of the building, not on the side where they.
Correct. So it's all kind of switching. This way, the, I'll switch to the next one. I don't have a laser on this. On the very left, there's a little vespial where the main doors are. That is where all visitors would enter into the building, so they have to check in with their main office. And that's been a district priority to make sure every building has a secure entry. So then, we reconfigured all of the main office through Student Services to accommodate the secure entry and a more efficient workflow within that space to utilize storage spaces and give them, everyone, the office or conference room or anything that they need. So we've worked through that with a different set of user group, principals and office staff, and then the guidance counselors. So for the site, this is kind of a reconfiguration to help flow and for student safety, so there's not so many vehicles and pedestrians mixed together. So to start on the right, where it's, if you went around the back, that's the maintenance, but instead, we're creating a student drop-off. That way, the parent could pull up, drop off their student, and if they're there, the cafeteria is there, they can.
Christina, if I could, that's next, how Eileen's bakery. That's what everybody's going to know. That's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my parents actually mentioned that. Straight from the school. So the parents will drop them off in the morning, and then the students can go to the cafeteria for their breakfast, and then it's, it's just parents dropping off. So no student should be crossing any streets or any, any traffic they are able to drop off on the side of the school. Then, still during the dismissal, or in arrival through the bus loop, that's where all buses would just drop off students and then leave as they come in. And then all teacher parking is in the parking lot. So then, on dismissal, the parent drop, or parent pickup could then be in the parking lot, and all buses are in the bus loop. So you have buses completely separate from parent pickup. And we've striped the parking lot for crosswalks and anything related to safety there. And then some of the other smaller buses could go through that, the parent drop-off from the morning. So. So we really worked hard to try to make sure that it's for student safety, separating vehicles and pedestrians. So at East Middle, their main scope items are gymnasium renovations. Right now, they're a large gymnasium, looking to replace the existing bleachers and possibly add a second set on the opposite side. Then restoring the floor, there are some issues with the leveling of the floor. New wall pads and replacing the folding divider, which is no longer really allowed by SED. We're going to replace it with a roll-down curtain for safety. And then the small gym, just kind of restoring the floor and a couple other minor things, but right now, that one's in good shape. And then some miscellaneous repairs throughout. So with this one, we are also trying to pronounce the entrance. We know that East Middle is kind of tucked in the corner, and no one really knows where the entrance is. So this is another alternate canopy. The wall, again, we can leave there, try to get in the base bed so that everyone knows, like, hey, this is East Middle's entry. And then we've also added a canopy over the trash totes at the maintenance just to hide that because it is within your bus loop main entry. And so our goal, and I'm going to flip, is to create more of a, like, a pronounced entry and hide the maintenance and receiving area as much as possible, but still allow them to get in and drop off. So also with this one, adding visitor parking in the bus loop and then pedestrian access up to the entry. This will, one, direct them to the secure entry that already exists, but it's also allows kind of any receiving that are coming in to kind of keep away from pedestrians.
So you're taking, like, the existing parking lot now, and you're using that as part of the loop and putting the parking lot in the middle?
Yes.
Or are you putting it on the side?
So we're only widening the loop, so we're leaving the existing loop the way it is. But we're just widening because we know the buses kind of, it's a little hard for them to turn, and they're in the mud. But then adding some additional parking there in the middle, so visitors could. And the principals here did ask for visitor parking that could be accessible while buses are in the loop, whereas the one at West, I'll back up really quick. For this one, if you see, visitor park, are going to be kind of stuck while buses are there. So it's just all about signage and saying that, you know, buses will be in here at this time, and, you know, you'll be there, so.
What's your timeline on Phase 2? When do you think you'll be?
So we are submitting to SED in December. SED review times are unknown. Our original schedule, it was six to eight months when we made the original schedule, so we were going to bid out next fall. It's really in SED's hands after we submit it. So if, if they come back quick and we're in a good bid period, we don't want to bid in the summer. You will not get good numbers, but if people are still looking for work, we could try to bid in the spring if we have approval, so. One last thing is, in Phase 2, we are finishing the connecting road. So we kind of modified some of it during Phase 1 with the purchase of the property. This is allowing the road to be set back a little bit from the turf complex, which will allow more space for pedestrians. Also, along the road, we're adding a sidewalk so that no one's on the road walking for that part.
Because it's the safety there is.
Right. And there'll be some speed tables, kind of, I think it's like between Allendale and West Elementary, those kind of longer ones. Because with a nicely paved road, probably going to have people going through that pretty quick. So. So that is it for Phase 2.
Is there a chorale room phased in or part of any of the phases for the East Middle School? Or is it just something that they're doing on the West Side?
What, a chorale?
A chorus room?
Right now, it's just the West, the music stuff at West.
I like your lack of change orders.
Yes, we knew you would, and that's one of the reasons brought up. It's actually, this project has the lowest amount of change orders I've experienced in my time, so it's for you.
So we're four and a half under. Did I see on Phase 1B, there's $800,000 spent?
That's not spent. That is the concession stand. That was in the prereq budget.
It's a return to the general fund for now. That's just, right now, that's just pending. So the project still exists.
I mean, well, what I'm getting at is we're four and a half to the prereq.
Mm-hmm, yes. And then plus whatever contingency might be left over from what we're holding in Phase 1. So right now, it's, it's in a good spot. Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's always great when things come under budget. You can save taxpayers a little bit of money. So thank you very much, and hopefully, everybody enjoyed hearing what's in store for the buildings. Now, let, I'd like to introduce Lindo Grady, the supervisor of our Transportation Department. Could you come up and, and give us some information as to what's going on there?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can take it off.
I just put it on because there was two of them, they were kind of pivoting back and forth.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So I'm Lindo Grady, the Transportation Supervisor. And I just wanted to touch this a little bit about what's going on in our department with this year and COVID, and how we are starting our school year. Even though West Seneca is virtual, we are still transporting to over 50 out-of-district schools, non-public and special needs schools. And we are also delivering lunches every day, and we're starting to deliver academic supplies every day. So first and foremost, we have the safety of our West Seneca students in mind. We have, with our buses, a very steady, over 95% DOT passing rate on our vehicles. So we're very proud of that. Last year, we were able to bring all of our special needs students back into our district transportation. So we now transfer all of our special needs students, and that was really important for us to do. We own it a little bit better if it's, if it's in our hands. And they are the, obviously, most vulnerable in the district, so we were really proud to be able to do that. We also installed GPS units in all of our buses last year. They're operational. They were very helpful with parents being able to be notified that their students are going to be picked up, so they wouldn't have to wait out in the elements. Let's see, I got my, I got your questions. I'm very nervous. I don't know what to tell you. I'm very nervous.
No, you're doing good.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Things that we had to do differently this year, we had to prioritize differently. I've been in transportation for over 30 years, and every year, we knew, we know what to expect with a new school year. And this year, we knew nothing. You know, we kind of came in, and with every phone call and every email, something new was, was hitting us. So even though we weren't starting our school year as normal, we still had to prepare for the school year that's upcoming along with, you know, overseeing all of the new information, all of the new transportation that we had to provide. So it's been interesting. It's been as crazy as usually for a new school year for us in transportation, but it's a different kind of crazy, so it adds a new element to it. But I think we're handling it really well. Like I said, we have, let's see, I don't know. We have 53 home-to-school routes per day that we're still covering. We have 21 lunch runs every day. And we are now covering, on an average, of six epic. And we are now covering on an average of six academic supply runs each day, depending on the school. Anywhere from six to ten we do on a daily basis. It's a very busy school year for us. Routing is more challenging because of the social distancing guidelines. Parents have been pretty understanding, very positive, you know, in in what we're doing from what, you know, from what I understand. Other than that, some obstacles that we have, keeping a full workforce. We were able to increase our starting wage recently, which is very helpful in keeping us competitive with the other districts. Other districts were starting about four dollars more an hour than we were, so raising that starting wage really helped with that. It's still difficult to get drivers, it's a, it's not an easy license to get. And DMV and state ID, they keep adding more, you know, more tasks onto it to make it a little more difficult to get that license. And along with that license comes the responsibility of keeping somebody else's children safe. And that scares a lot of people, so. But we have a strong team, I have some great people over there in transportation with me, and I have a great crew in the office. So I think we manage it well.
We're not using any first student at this point.
We're not using any first student at this point, correct. I don't, yeah, I don't see a need that we would have to use them until we are back a hundred percent.
Interesting.
Yeah. You know, as more things sort of come into play, as we start incorporating, you know, the special needs students back in, I mean, some elementary. It's gonna be a little tricky with routing, but, you know, Jackie and I spoke, you know, earlier and she said what would work? And I said, you know, what works for the kids and we'll figure it out. So, you know, it's, you know, we always gotta make it work for the kids, so.
Lynda, we still have three different, well, if we were back to regular, you have three different, whatever, schedules or route?
Tiers.
Oh, tiers, thank you. Four?
We have four tiers.
Okay. So could possibly fit in a fifth of things and we just, you know what I'm saying, I'm just wondering?
It would be a, it would be a much later, it'd be a very late start time for the kids.
I was just wondering, like, you know, if something happens and we do start bringing students back. Let's say hybrid, it's gonna be, you know what I'm saying?
It'll, yeah, it'll be crazy, but, you know, we'll figure it out. So, you know, right now, we're doing the out of district, a lot of hybrids. Doing a lot of money through Friday, like all of the, the parochial schools are money through Friday. But a lot of the special needs out of district are hybrids. So, you know, we kind of have a feel for it already.
I think there's some four and five day programs too, I'm sure that some of our special needs go to, a lot of districts are doing it. Okay. Thank you.
How does the transportation work even during the normal school year? I've never really been able to get that. We we pick up kids for private schools and then bring them directly to the school or do they get on buses that?
It depends on the school. So for like Queen of Heaven, that's an in district private school, so they are picked up from home and taken to directly to school.
So they live on a dedicated bus or multiple buses?
Correct. Correct. If we go downtown, so like Narvem and Canisius are very close together. So we have what we call early birds. So we have about ten buses that go around the district in the morning to different areas and pick up each, you know, those students. And then we have different transfer points. There are two different transfer points, one is West Middle and one is Northwood. And then students will get off of the early bird buses and transfer onto their buses to head to their respective schools. So because there's only, say, Canisius, we might only have fifty or sixty students that go to that school. If we sent one bus out for those kids, we would be all over the district and it would take two hours just to pick those students up. So out of district runs are always longer. A lot of the parents struggle with understanding that, but it's because of the routing logistics that that those buses are using.
So we're not picking up kids for West Seneca schools and then the private schools and then trans, like, they're not, there's no sharing of buses or anything like that, like?
No, and the, on the early birds, we might have some powder road students, if they, the vocational students, if they have the early vocationals.
Oh, okay.
They might be on those, but it's mostly the out of district, non-public students.
And do parents drop, do parents drop off at transportation sites?
They can, they can, yeah, it's their choice. They know, you know, what time it leaves that transfer point. Because of the length of the bus ride and getting everybody on the bus and transferring, a lot of times we're picking up at starting at six fifteen and they're still might not start until seven thirty. So we don't leave the transfer or the transfer site until about seven oh five, so a lot of times they'll meet at the transfer point. More questions?
See, it wasn't there.
I think I missed all my notes.
I just wanna say, I wanna just thank you, Lynda, and you and your crew over there have been absolutely phenomenal and very responsive to anything we've thrown at them. So I just wanna thank everybody for all their hard work.
How is the, I know that we're not using them all that much right now, the GPS implementation? That cut down on a lot of calls, finding your lines to the garage?
I think so.
Created more at the beginning?
Um, at the beginning, it was more just trying to, you know, figuring out how to get onto the bus or onto the apps and things like that, but I think it's cut down a lot.
Do you find, I mean, I was a big fan of it, mostly because I felt, again, I don't know how many times I thought about calling the bus garage, say, hey, where's my bus? Now I don't have to. Is that, is it, is it dress change? Are are most of the parents using the apps or is it a ten percent or?
I don't, I don't think most of the parents, I think we, the last I had heard, we only had, I think, like seven hundred some sign up for it.
Okay.
But that was in the early stages, so I'm sure it's more now.
Is that, we have two apps, is that seven hundred total?
No, that was seven hundred just for ours.
Just for ours?
I didn't have, I didn't get, wasn't able to get numbers on first students.
It'll catch on more, I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, that was early on and then everything kind of.
Yeah, but when you have five children in one house.
It's helpful.
That's five apps.
And I do, do any of the drivers take temperatures? Do they have to do that?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, we do. So when students get on the bus, we do take the temperature of the students. And then obviously, the occupancy of the bus has been, you know, cut down a lot, so. I think the most we have on a bus is, I wanna say fourteen, and that's on a full sized bus. You know, and that's even with combining, you know, like the out of district schools and things like that, so.
Well, it takes more time.
Yeah, it does, yeah. But it's, I mean, it's going well. We we haven't had, you know, any pushback with, you know, the masks with the students. One of the drivers came in after a couple days, she said, you know, she goes, I said to my students, I have to take your temperature. And the child immediately went like this. They're just automatic, they're so acclimated to it already. It's, this is, they're the new normal. And so, you know, they're just so used to all of that now, yeah, they just immediately stuck their forehead.
I'm gonna say, my wife does that to me every time I walk out the door in the morning for work. So I do the same night, so.
You know, so, I mean, the students are acclimated, we haven't had any, any issues with mask wearing on the buses. We haven't had, you know, any issues with taking the temperatures. We did have two high reads, you know, for one time, but the parents were right there at the stop and just immediately took the students home and, you know, no questions or issues. So everybody's really, for as chaotic as it is everywhere, everybody's kind of pulling together and making it work, so I think that's huge.
What is the protection for the bus drivers on the bus? They're wearing masks, is there plexi, is there face mask or face shields?
So face shields are available, but I'm clear about that. They are wearing masks. And we are, for once, we're in the process now of getting a, it's like a vinyl sheeting. Because we couldn't use plexiglass because it's not fire resistant. So DOT only approved a few different options. So it's vinyl sheeting and there is a bus that's already retrofitted if anybody wanted to come and take a look at it. There's going to be a piece of that behind the driver and then behind the first seat. And then if you're walking up the bus stairs, it will be at the top of the bus stairs and then behind that first seat. So those first seats of the bus are going to be sort of ported off in case the student is at a stop. Right now, it's going pretty smooth because we don't have as many students going. But once we're going back full force, if a parent isn't able to stop with a student, we can't, if they're at work and we can't call them back, we're still gonna have to transfer them to school if they do have a temperature or if they won't wear a mask. So then they would be in one of those front seats until we got to school. And then the school would be notified, you know, that we were coming with somebody that read a high temperature or didn't wear a mask or something.
At that point, the school nurse and the school administrator intervene and they contact the parents and go from there. We just, we're not gonna leave, we're not gonna just kick kids off the bus and tell them, go fend for yourselves, so. We'll take care of them.
But it's a clear vinyl, it's, you know, it's.
Little incubation cube.
Pretty much, yes, you know, as odd as it sounds, but it is, it just separates them.
And so then the next thing up for you guys, most recent, or in the nearest future, is gonna be transporting sports teams. So how's that going to work? What's gonna be like the maximum capacity on our large buses?
It would still be about twenty, students will have their own seats.
Okay.
And then they'd obviously have to wear masks. We are transporting golf already, that started, I think, last week. But yes, so it would be twenty per bus. That would be the max that we would have on the bus, and that would be one student per seat.
So there's not empty seats in between?
I'm sorry?
There's not empty seats in between?
We got, this is probably, again, this is, something that's probably not happening right now, but dead end streets. I know we can't necessarily take our buses, our big buses down the dead end streets. I have one near my house with a friend, I believe, it's been brought up before, where the kids have to wait basically at the corner of a busy road. And I've driven by a hundred times and I can't rack my brain of any other thing to do about it. Is it, is it, how many dead end streets do we service in the district, you know?
I know I don't have a number, but there are a lot.
It's more than like four.
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah.
Is it common that the kids are waiting in the corner of a street, like, or do they, a lot of times have sidewalks or? Do we have a report, do we, do we know the situation of all the dead end streets or is it something that we?
If it's, if it's a dead end and there's a younger student down that dead end, we will try to route a smaller bus. They can go down and pick the student up. If they're secondary students, depending on, you know, how far down it is, we will usually estimate the corner. But I have had parents call and say that they're not comfortable with it.
I was just curious.
Yeah, then we'll do our best to route a small bus. The problem with that is a lot of times the parents don't want the small bus.
Right, well.
So, you know, then we're kind of up against, you know, but, yeah. I mean, if a parent calls and they have a concern about their student standing at the corner, you know, we do our best to try to route a small bus down there for them.
Again, it's just this one that's right by my house that I, every morning I leave, there's, you know, giant snowbank and there's kids in the street. Like, in the street. And so the parents end up waiting in the car a little farther back, but there's not even a spot where you could just tell them to wait in the driveway. Like, the next house is.
There's no sidewalk?
Like, um, no, no. That's the, the sidewalk ends like, you know, a hundred yards back. So and it's not even like you could say wait in the driveway because there's the house farther down. But then the next driveway isn't up on, and it's on a busy road. So I just, again, I didn't know how many of those types of situations we have. I've already talked about Matt with it a few times, but it's just one of those things where I'm usually good at, at some point, thinking, well, there's, there's a way around this. And I can't for the life of me.
Well, it is, it is really to send a smaller bus down there, so.
Yeah.
And we are limited with that as well because we're using those for the special needs students and things like that, so.
Right, right. And if that's not a possibility, I don't know if, is there, you know how there's like, certain areas have waiting areas? Like, is there ever, it's not private, it's private property, but have we ever looked into almost concrete, small little kids waiting here right down the corner of a busy street? Instead of doing a dedicated bus to where, you know, I mean, has there ever been conversation? You know what I'm asking?
You mean like a little?
Are you talking about Collins?
Yeah.
Yeah, the end of my street. All those kids don't live down on the dead end. I don't know where those kids come from.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, I don't know how they could. I've seen it there, you know, many, every morning.
I've seen those kids, yeah, I mean, that's why I see them every morning and that's all I know.
Somehow, because your parents with cars, you know, and why, why is there even a stop? Because I can't imagine all those kids living there.
I do, I do have some friends that live on that street.
At the dead end?
Yeah. Yeah, there's small children farther down.
Oh, okay.
So they're elementary students?
Yeah, they are, they're all young.
Oh, for Winchester.
I was just thinking, like, you know, Winchester, Winchester has like the Crossing Guard check. At Winchester, I didn't know if there was ever an approachable situation where we, again, I don't, maybe we can look into that on specific, but if we have a hundred dead end streets, I don't wanna, like, there's not a solution to every dead end street. But definitely cannot get a bus down the street, like, there's no way. So I didn't know if there was ever, like, ever.
I mean, if I look specifics, I could look at routing a small bus down there.
Right, I can, I can email over, Matt, I mean, you guys, I was just curious. I don't necessarily know if you can route a small bus over or not. That may be why, the amount of kids might even.
Right. Yeah, well, I'd have to look at, at the situation.
Then I'm thinking, like, we can't even have them cross the street because the sidewalks, I don't know if everyone's familiar with there, but sidewalks end before it gets to the busy street. Like, they ended them, you know, like, almost a whole house like back. Why, I don't know. But yeah, I'll, I'll, since we're talking about a specific one. So this isn't really a common dead end street problem, most of them are?
Yeah, most of, most of them are, you know, there's either sidewalk or driveway or.
I'd really like to know where all those students live that are there on a corner because there are cars there with adults waiting for the bus to come.
Four of us will grab coffee one of these.
And where do you live?
We'll get down to the, we'll get down to the.
Please wear your name badges, okay?
Okay, any other questions for Lynda?
I appreciate that, I'll, I'll pass that on. One, every morning I see it and it stresses me out.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, you're doing a great job in these strange, strange times. Okay, now we have some educational updates from Conprisico, the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Operations.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so, just to start off, I know you had asked for, you know, a job description of what it is that is entailed with my daily duties. So a lot of collaborating with district stakeholders to provide leadership and vision and the ongoing planning, implementation and development and direction for our educational operations. So that involves, includes but not limited to, pre-K twelve programming, special education programming, working collaboratively with Jackie back there, curriculum and student support services. Also, it involves collaboration with our district leaders, whether they're building leaders, directors, facilitators, personnel administrators, teacher leaders and also the curriculum cabinet. Just to ensure that we have a comprehensive educational program that meets the needs of all of our learners. We have diverse learning populations, so we wanna make sure that we have programs that speak to each of them. Working closely with all the stakeholders to assess student needs for the purpose of improving the instructional program for the district. And then also seeking ways to continue to help our district progress towards innovative and unique experiences for students. So when I think about that, I think, how can we be the trailblazers? We want people coming to West Seneca, what's West Seneca doing, how are they doing that? And so we wanna be the ones that are leading the way for the rest. In regards to some accomplishments from last year, and these are just a few of the things that I was dealing with on last year. The adoption of the attendance policy, so it's our first year seeing it through, and I do have those results for you that you asked as well, so I'll hand those out after. The special education district plan development, that was quite a while to develop that plan and process. District-wide day-to-days, we had implemented that for a first time last year. It was really a high need, determined to be a high need from our building leaders and teachers, that we have dedicated time so that we are looking at student work. Districts that have a clear focus on what their students are producing and having that laser-like commitment have high achieving results. And so starting to embed that culture within the district will yield rewards, hopefully sooner than later and for years to come. Some of the things that we had begun last year that we had to unfortunately put a hold on were the Capstone Experience Initiative, which is a middle school initiative where we're getting students opportunities to get involved with technology. So a little, you know, foreshadowing of things that we needed to happen for this year especially. Also giving them opportunities to communicate, collaborate, work with other students, seek opportunities in the community where they can have internships or work side by side with organizations so that they can learn some skills that they can extend beyond the classroom. And giving them an environment where it's really risk-free, no grade was associated with it, it was more about the learning experience for all. So we are continuing on with that. We began to explore an honors program for grade eight ELA and also for social studies. Currently, at the middle school level, we have accelerated science and math. We had an accelerated ELA, we're looking to make that more honors based so that we can continue English language instruction into the high school for all four years. That has been deemed to be a high priority. And then social studies, we also wanted to give those students an opportunity to have some enrichment, to have that experience at their level without a consequence of being on a high school transcript when they move up to the high school. The seal of bi-literacy, also something else that we started last year. We are actually full speed ahead with that this year. So we had identified students last year in January, we've got it just under the deadline there. So we're working right now currently to afford students that opportunity. We did learn today that because students were exempt from regents exams last year, that is a requirement that is already fulfilled for those students. We have approximately, I wanna say thirty-three students, I believe, that are qualifying for seal of bi-literacy, should they continue, wish to continue. Our teachers have surveyed the students and they all have expressed a desire to continue. Our teachers have surveyed the students and they all have expressed a desire to continue. Um, district AIS procedures and policy review, we began that last year as well. That has to be updated on an annual basis and really equipping our providers with the skills um, of putting into RTIM, the notices of service, the progress reports for students, letters that go out to parents, um, just making sure that we are communicating that with all of our stakeholders, the students as well as the parents. We also started conversations late winter on elementary report card revision. So we had formulated several subcommittees by grade level to take a look at the report card. We had identified areas that we wanted to tweak or improve to make better. Um, and then March came, so it's on hold for right now, but we, we have not forgotten that, um, initiative. Another thing that is in progress right now, um, is the D-SIP and the S-SIP. So that is the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, as well as the School Comprehensive Educational Plans at both of our middle schools. As you are aware, we were designated a target district because we have one or more schools that have been designated as target schools. So that, um, is a plan in and of itself. At our next board meeting, as a matter of fact, the outside educational expert that we are working with will be here to talk through the process and to give you a bird's eye view of what that plan entails. So we're working to continue to do that. Some things that, um, the prior year that we had worked on was, again, the district-wide comprehensive attendance policy, which we had really revised to build in some tiered interventions that were lacking from our previous attendance policy. So we have the support of the West Seneca Police Department, we have the Family Youth Court, we have Erie County probation officers that were working with us. So we built in those tiered interventions, you know, Mary was part of that committee too. Um, when I first came here, I was told, we need to work on a secondary grading protocol that's consistent. So we formulated a committee across our middle school and high schools, and we have consistent categories, weighted categories across the district in all of our subject areas. So that teachers, um, are pretty much in line with what one another is doing in a particular department. So that there aren't any really lopsided category weights for students and that there is no advantage of having one teacher over another when it comes to grading. We implemented the DEFT program as well, which is our partnership with Buffalo State College. So we have quite a few DEFT candidates that work with us and serve in the role of substitute teachers, but they're also getting an experience themselves, um, when they're here, about what it's like to be a teacher. And so we're kind of getting an opportunity to groom these candidates to potentially be teachers with us in our district someday. Um, Supper Club was another opportunity, building-based projects that, an example of that, and also Career Day at the middle schools. Um, Supper Club speaks more to the social-emotional component for our students. So that's giving students an opportunity to, um, talk about decision-making and peer relations um, all along while cooking a meal. And you have that family dynamic of the students. And at the end, a parent is invited to come in and join that. So that was something that happened after school, um, for about a six or eight week period of time. The Career Days, we implemented those last year for the first time in a while. They were vacant for a little bit, but the, the middle schools did a tremendous job. We visited some other districts to have some examples of other formats that were out there, and we picked one that worked for us. Some professional development opportunities also, mandated trainings for staff that we arranged, CPI training, which really, um, instructs staff on the holds that they have to do if needed. DASSA certification for our social workers, you have to be certified on a yearly basis to be a DASSA coordinator, those are our social workers. And then Power School Training, just to name a few of the PD opportunities that we provided. Um, a lot of what I do too is policy and procedure creation. For instance, you know, we have McKinney-Vento, so what are allowable expenditures? So we had to do kind of an outline and guidelines of what are those things. Um, DASSA incident form development, we had to make sure that we had an appropriate form available to community as well to report any incidents. Um, impact of COVID, what has been different? I think, you know, it, there's really been a highlighted emphasis on meeting student needs, and that's not just academic, it's physical, it's social-emotional. Um, during this time where we have been, especially the first few months, disconnected in a way of, that we weren't used to when we have that face-to-face daily contact. So that has really been a change, emphasizing, um, meeting the staff needs. Staff has needed tremendous support too. We've never been through a pandemic before, so navigating through this together has been an increased focus. Really increasing communication in a variety of modalities. Where an in-person meeting might have been something that was very easy to do in the past, now you have to think of different ways to do that. Is it a Google Meet? Is it a Zoom? Are you having, you know, breakout rooms or whatever the format may be? There has been a need to really look and reflect on how can we make this effective as well in a different modality. Developing a lot of communications over the past six months or so, feels like an eternity this whole pandemic time, um, to staff, to students, to families in the community. You know, really pushing out letters, having videos, things of that nature, where we're just keeping in constant communication. We want our families and community members to know what it is that we're planning. The extensive planning and development of those protocols, procedures and schedules. So, the very beginning, you know, not knowing how long this was going to last, we had to develop teacher guidelines. We had to develop protocols for teachers to push out to students. We had to modify curriculum, um, in a way that, you know, was unconventional to begin with. But we adapted, all along we adapted and we were able to get that. And I think we've learned from those first initial weeks of being in the emergency school closure to now, where we are far better prepared, um, after having training. Um, revision of existing policies as related to current instructional need, so model rather. So again, taking a look at our curriculum and how are those modifications being made? Where did our students fall down, if you will? How do we bridge that gap in learning? So having those conversations. Um, also collaborating, I collaborated a lot with local districts to see how is it that they're achieving some of these things? You know, what can we potentially learn from other districts? That has been very helpful. I think that we all have seen a keen shift on focus of the use of instructional technology. Um, moving towards the use of a single platform has been huge. When we first started off in our closure, we had multiple platforms. So a parent in one household might have been using multiple platforms to communicate, and that's difficult. So now having one, regardless of how many children and at what level we have, has been extremely helpful for not only families but for staff as well. And also providing teachers with digital resources to support their instruction. So, we've had to make some acquisition of resources, for example, Reader's Writer Workshop. We have digital online, um, resources for teachers. We're moving towards Newzella for our high school and middle school teachers, which is another online, um, digital resource for ELA. So those are just some of, some of the ways that COVID has impacted, um, the job here. How will remote learning impact the work? How will my duties differ as a result of COVID? I really think creativity and ingenuity, um, has been and will continue to be key. We have to continue to find ways to provide students with opportunities regardless of whatever model we are in, whether it's face-to-face, whether it's virtual, whether it's hybrid. No single student, I believe, should lose out as a result of the instructional model that we are in. So that will be, um, you know, a different way how it will impact me. Equipping teachers with the resources and tools to connect with and engage our students in purposeful and meaningful way that ensures students are learning and progressing towards achieving those standards. We, again, we just want to make sure that our kids continue to make those accomplishments and achievements in their content areas. Also seeking opportunities to continue, um, implementing those initiatives. So we don't want things to come to a screeching halt. So, the way it did in March, you know, that kind of was unorthodox and we had to put some things on hold, but yet we continue to seek ways to make those things happen. Um, yes, there will be challenges that come our way, but not excuses. So we want to make sure that we're still giving kids every opportunity possible. So for example, I think I mentioned, we are still pushing forward with the seal of bi-literacy. Those kids were, explained that opportunity back in January, and we want them to have that opportunity now because they'll be seniors, um, so they're not going to have it again. So we want to make sure that we follow through with that. Providing meaningful professional development for our, um, staff. We want to make sure, for example, U-B trauma, we had, had our first two days of digital online learning for trauma education practices. So really kind of reframing the conversation, um, that we as individuals, not only amongst ourselves but with kids as well, what, we have to perceive that there may have been some trauma, especially in the past six months, that people have gone through, and we don't just flip a switch and it's gone. Those are things that sometimes can be re-triggered. So we want to be able to, um, equip our staff with the tools to have those conversations and to recognize the signs of trauma. What are some of the obstacles? You know, I think that obstacles help us make us stronger. So, we can't look at them as stops of what we're doing, but how do we get around that so that we can continue to push forward? So I think as long as we keep our focus on what's best for kids, that that will progress and propel us forward. Um, barriers to which we have little or no control, obviously, you know, there are outside factors, mandates, unknowns, um, but we focus on what we can control. So, for example, science labs. I mean, if you think about it, how are we doing the science labs virtually? So there are a lot of creativity, creativity, um, that our teachers have had to, you know, tap one another for. Are they demonstrating, are they doing online labs? Um, what other creative ways? Plus, you know, now that the state is also giving us some ideas, you know, how you can get around some of those requirements virtually. Um, so there have been some adaptations. The grading protocol that we just put in place, well, that's kind of hard now because if we haven't given hard assessments by the first five weeks, and that's a major component of someone's grades, how do we work around that? So we are having discussions with the original committee on how can we modify that a little bit so that it's reflective of our current instructional model? So we just want to make sure we're being flexible. Um, our challenges will be, I think, to develop a district plan at this point that transitions students back to our buildings in a safe, yet gradual manner, and then still continuing to provide remote instruction for families that request it, that need it potentially because of a medical need. That will be a challenge, but we'll find a way, we will persevere. Finding ways, again, another challenge would be to remediate any regression in learning, um, for kids over the last several months. So we'll have to really work together to implement some of those baseline assessments so that we can target our instruction. That's part of the day-to-day rationale as well, if we're giving those common assessments, we can evaluate what standards were flagged as, you know, this is a struggling point for some of our students, so let's re, refocus our instruction there. Again, the social-emotional support, not only for our students and staff but our community as well. How can we seek opportunities to provide that? And then again, ensuring that we are compliant with that district comprehensive improvement plan, and then the school, the school comprehensive education plans at both in middle school, our district S-SIP status. We just received our long-term goals and measures of interim progress that the state has determined for each of our buildings and our districts. So we are in the process of scheduling meetings right now with building principals to review that so that we know what the expectations are and where those milestones are that we have to move towards. The last question I think you wanted to know is how the board and the district can support me? I think just keep continuing to communicate your ideas to me and to us um, so that we can work together to try to find ways to implement things, sharing, um, you know, those thoughts. If you hear something that maybe was happening in another district that you would be interested in maybe us looking into, let me know. Be happy to look into those things. Um, seek our input as well on, on issues or questions that you might have. And I just think having an open mind with new proposals, maybe new ideas that we might come to you with. If you have an open mind, give us a shot to try that out. I think that's how best you can support us as a team, so.
Karen, I'm glad to hear that, um, you're evaluating, because I think when our students do get back into school, you're gonna, we're gonna find areas that they're lacking in and lost.
Right.
Over this whole time, so. Um, unfortunately, I think maybe our kindergartners might not have that much, but at least they can catch them up.
Absolutely.
Because that's, that's my biggest fear is the kids have lost so much, you know what I mean? And they're struggling, so.
I see a lot of positives, like, oh, my kids are doing well with it. But then what's heartbreaking is you see the one where my kids just keep giving up, like, I feel like they're, they haven't done anything all year. Like, I, like, I'm very happy to hear that there's going to be some sort of, just to double-check and make sure, because.
Yeah.
I mean, I might think my son's doing great. You know what I mean? Is he, is he really getting the material? I don't know.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I know it's a lot harder to put a grade, um, I, again, I've been home a few times walking through, while there's five kids being taught, you know, in my house in different, different rooms and stuff. And, uh, it seems like they're engaged, but, um, you know, again, I, it's kind of such a different world, so I'm happy to hear you know, we're gonna be checking on, because again, again, my, my son, he may not be at the level he wants to be at. That's different than being at the level he needs to be at.
Right.
Or, you know, a kid, um, even mentally though, I feel like they haven't gotten it, they might not realize they are, you know, they might not realize either how bad they are or how great they're doing just because of the fact that it's still a whole, we're stuck at home and, and that, you know, like a more mental, um.
Exactly. And I, and I think that that's also been a key component too, is it's not just the academic piece right now, but it's also that social-emotional that we're building in those supports for students. We have the contact of, you know, the staff member to the ten students on the list that we're checking in, and then we're making those check and connect attempts because we don't want to lose kids along the way.
How is that coming along, um, as far as feedback and are most people answering and giving good feedback?
I think for the most part, it's been pretty well-received from families and, and we have now, uh, a vehicle to track maybe kids who aren't responding so that we can put in other, uh, procedures in place to make those connections with families.
We've done a lot more home visits, I will say. Our administrators, social workers, just going and just checking in on kids too. And, uh, I had a building principal say to me just yesterday that honestly, in terms of, they actually, in some cases, in terms of students that might be having attendance issues are actually feeling that they're a little bit ahead of the game and that they're addressing some of these issues a little sooner than they might. I mean, you know, the, the attendance, somebody who poor attendance, a lot of times what happens is the start of the school year, the days kind of trickle in at first, so it doesn't necessarily take the shape of something that immediately concerns you because you look at it from a percentage standpoint, oh, it's not that bad. Then all of a sudden you look at it and it's the middle of October, end of October, beginning of November, and you're saying, wow, this person has really missed a substantial number of days. Um, but you've got, you know, all your other students that you're seeing on a regular basis. So I think what you're, what, one of the things that we're doing now is that, you know, we've really identified this list. And if we're going to start off fully remote, it's going to be more critical than ever that we maintain that contact, which is why you're seeing things like home visits, things like letters going out to families, hey, we haven't seen you in a couple of classes.
Yeah, I can tell you this, I've, uh, I've had two wellness checks already from teachers calling. So, implementing what we talked about with the five or the six students per teacher calling. And, you know, they were just checking up, finding out and seeing how everything was going. So, it was, uh, refreshing to see that, you know, everything from our end was fine and their end was fine. And she was asking for a little bit of feedback, um, on some of the challenges. Um, so I think we are trying to reach as many as we possibly can and keep them connected. Uh, Karen, one more question for you, you and your acronyms, RTM.
RTI?
Yeah.
It's the Response to Intervention.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're always getting me with them, all the time you throw me curveballs, all right. That's okay.
I just want to ask a little bit about the social-emotional well-being of our students. Remote learning's going great, so far. But that social-emotional is not going great so far. It's on, on your calls, on your Google Meets, in your classes, do this, do that. The children are not really given an outlet to interact with each other?
Mm-hmm.
Or to, how are you? How was your day? Does your teacher know you? That kind of stuff. Is, is that being built in? Because some of our students may end up being remote, like you said, for medical reasons for the entire year. They might be a ninety-five student, but they might be falling apart on an emotional level.
Understood. So I think part of this U-B traumatic educational practices is the role of, say, a restorative circle or, you know, there is some dedicated time at the beginning or end of a period or part of a morning meet if you're elementary or part of a day's wrap-up where you're having those opportunities to have conversations. So we, we just started this week with the PD and it involves ten additional hours after this first one-on-one, we're calling it, the two-hour session. So teachers are going to be learning those things. Um, you know, part of just restorative justice is overall and culturally responsive, builds in some of those things as well. So, um, you know, we can definitely make sure that we're highlighting that when I speak to the people from U-B to accentuate that as we move forward in the next stages of our planning.
One thing I would add to it as well is so many of our teachers have just taken what practices they've used in terms of checking in with their kids, and, you know, almost it's demystified to some extent. Wait a minute, I still, I, I know one teacher at West Middle, for instance, seventh grade English teacher that starts the week, every week with, you know, good news. And that's what he calls it, and he goes around the room and has kids just talk about their weekend or talk about whatever's on their mind. Um, now, I haven't jumped into his classrooms, I've jumped into a few Google Meets and seen some phenomenal, you know, teachers, I've just seen some really good work, but, you know, people saying, hey, what can I translate? What was working for me, to your point, Jody, because it's a really valid point you're bringing up. What was working for me before? How, what can I continue and then what new things, as Karen was talking about, the sort of innovative type things? Do I need to sort of, you know, raise my game a little bit? Because what you're describing is one hundred percent something that has to be addressed. So I just, I, I guess I just want to put an exclamation point on what you just said. I think that's a critical area that we're going to continue to need to be sensitive to. And I will tell you too, like, even social workers, counselors and whatnot, they're still working towards facilitating groups and things like that as well. It may look a little different because it's, because it's virtual, um, but that's, these are still things that we see value in and want to continue to be able to do just for this, this temporary period of time, so.
Sure. I mean, I'll say, in some of my son's classes, he doesn't know, he's never had a class with a student before this year, and he doesn't know anything about, he doesn't know if it's somebody he would like to form a relationship with.
Sure.
So they just. So, they just, and the teachers did a lot of get-to-know-you where the, yes, the teachers know them, but the other students don't know each other. And you talk to the same three people that you would talk to all the time. It's just not fostering new relationships and things like that. So, I'd like to see...
Yeah, and I think that is a component of the digital learning plan, the team-building aspect. So, that is part of what a teacher will be including in his or her plan. And they may be working towards that right now. But just within the first few weeks of setting up the procedures, it just might not have come to the forefront as quickly, perhaps.
Yep. No, I mean, the learning portion is going well, in my opinion.
But it is something that we do value because we want kids to have an opportunity to kind of get that out so that they can learn. Because sometimes, I mean, as adults, we have things that we heavily on our mind, and maybe you can't really focus as clearly as you could possibly if you had an opportunity just to talk about it. So, building in those opportunities is definitely something we'll be working towards.
Karen, I got one question for you, too, real quick. As you listen, I, with my daughters, it's her easy day, as what she calls it. Are we doing anything? Because, you know, when that study hall happens, it's basically sign off and go. Are we doing anything to entice them to stay and have maybe that group chat? And I know, I mean, we're, it kind of is facilitated by our teacher or something that we could keep them engaged in having a topic, you know? I mean, we've already gone through All About Me. You know, they've all done all that already. My daughter did get a B on that. All About Me. I'm like, okay, Al, I guess she didn't know, but... Yeah, and so, you know, I just think it's that dead time. And then, because then she has a lunch after that. So, now I'm looking at back-to-back. And she's just kind of, you know, as a, yeah, it's TikTok time. It's lunchtime. It's, you know, so I'm thinking of something that, you know, maybe we could engage a little bit more, maybe introducing clubs or talking to them about other things that they can look forward to. You know? Because I can tell when it's the easy day. You know, that she's just kind of really just moping around, really, just waiting for, you know, lunch or the next class. And I think, Jody touched on a little bit, they're really not seeing these people as much because last year she was sixth grade and there was only A and B. Now, there's C, A, B, and C. So, there's an influx of all-new people, which she's never really even met before. So, just food for thought.
Opportunities for student connections, I think, would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, can I ask, you mentioned that you are reaching out to other districts and schools to help formulate your plan to re-enter students. How is that working out? Or, I know that it was flying by me, too.
Yeah, okay. I thought maybe I was hallucinating because I didn't have these things on, so.
Yeah, yeah. Have you, how many districts have you reached out or getting a lot of good feedback?
Well, I'm part of an instructional advisory board. So, I see a lot of communications going through electronically. But specifically, you know, looking into things like happening in DePew, Clarence, East Aurora, Hamburg. I mean, I know Matt also has conversations with superintendents. I think, you know, the more closely we work together, the stronger we are. And learning from one another, I think, is extremely beneficial for us as we move to implement a hybrid schedule of some sort to bring students back into our district.
Also, too, I don't know if you reached out, you're a point, as I heard, they do like the three, or two, three, three, two, you know what I'm saying? Just to get their feedback on what they're doing on those other days.
There are so many variations out there that exist. And I think the key is kind of cherry-picking, right? Like, what did we like from that plan? What did we like from that plan? Oh, this could work really well here in formulating our own and what works for us. And we're beginning to have those conversations so that we can formulate a plan that will work for us and yet keep the goal in mind of safely and gradually bringing back our kids. Because we want them in front of us.
Well, that's very important to me, too, that the kids get back in school, too.
Right.
I think the face-to-face is, you know, a lot sooner for a lot of our population. Some work very well remotely. Others need a classroom, and that would help foster, you know, friendships. It's got to be probably scary for some students if you don't know who's in your class. You're not going to speak out or feel comfortable answering and stuff. So, I think that is very important. Thank you.
Sure. I do have the attendance data that you had requested, so I'll just pass those out to you.
Right.
We, I know at one point with our board docs, we had looked at being able to do, say, voting by the computer and different stuff like that. Do these kids interact only by, like, if the teacher asks a question, is it just the kid has to raise their hand or do whatever they do and answer it? Or is the computers themselves involved in the, like, if the teacher asks a question, someone has to answer? Do they have, am I, I'm not in a classroom, so I don't know. But do they communicate through the computer? And when I, I know that some, not, I'm talking like, if I'm a student and teacher asks a question, how do I answer that question? Do I raise my hand or say something, or do I hit a button?
You can raise your hand. There is a raise-your-hand feature. There is a chat room that you can type in a question if you have that the teacher can answer.
Oh, really? Okay, that's why I was just here. So, it's not just the whole, like, you got to...
Right. There is back-to-back.
Yeah, they split the screen. My daughter was writing something, and the teacher jumped on and corrected it while she was writing it.
Oh, really?
So, there's some good features. I think Ally's got some little hands that they hold up in front of the camera. And then the teacher knows which one is asking the question. So, I mean, there's different ways. And then it's usually the person who doesn't wave their hand up that they ask the question.
That's the one that's like, you know, need to be...
And I think that each individual teacher may have their own strategy as well. You know, for example, they might have equity sticks, they're called. And so, there are, you know, if there are 23 students in the class, I have 23 sticks with all of their names on, and I might just pull one from the can and say, Ed, what do you think? You know, so there's all different kinds of variations.
Yeah, I think that's what's nice, is they're able to identify who's what and who needs to help. I think that's where the focus is right now.
Let me bet, kind of, in the future, though, if the kids have these surface posts and stuff in classrooms, it might be good ways to interact with the board and teaching and all that.
I think it's, there are certain things that I think are just never going away, I think, that we will utilize, you know, two years, three years, four or five years from now, just in terms of technology or ideas. So, I mean, kind of, as Karen said, there's some innovation that is taking place right now that I think will be of benefit in the future. I can't tell you exactly what right now because it's in the future, but I just do believe that there are some things that are good that are coming from this, so.
Well, everyone's learning. Students, well, staff, I know that, so.
And then, I had one more question, and this kind of just shows that I, I'm not involved in my children's life at all. When you call the house, the homeless call that you guys know, is it, are five different people calling my house because I have five kids? Or is one person assigned to my family?
I think it's five, if there are different buildings.
Yeah, it's probably five different people checking in with you like that. They broke down all the buildings like that, so.
Three different buildings, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious. If we're getting one caller, five, or...
I think they're checking in kids-specific, basically. They just want to make sure. And I, and honestly, the way we start this off there, and some parents have already provided us some degree of feedback to say, you know what? I'm good right now, and we'll see, maybe we check in a couple of weeks with you or something along those lines, too, so.
We can add you to the list, Ed.
Yeah.
Yeah, call on Ed and see how he's doing.
I was able to, my check-in person said, you can shoot me an email. You don't have to call me. Shoot me an email, I don't care what time, and I'll respond to your email every week. So, that's how we've decided to do ours.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you so much. You've been working hard. Thanks, you know, for all your work for the kids, and we all appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Look at this thing.
Karen, do you mind me asking a quick question? I'm sorry. The students are lacking. Are we going to decide to put extra resources in the, how the students are connecting? Yeah, I know the three A and the six A, but we're going to put, once we tend, I think, we're still...
Okay.
Peter.
Okay, so for personnel, we have some leave of absence that have been extended, appointments of a media specialist and a sub, some resignations, some replacements, some soccer coaches that we need to certify. So, can I have a motion to accept all of personnel?
I'll move in that.
Okay, Ms. Delbo, can I have a second? Mr. Kwiatkowski, any discussion on any of those? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Carried seven to zero. Okay, we have the contracts that need to be approved for...
Young and Right?
For Young and Right, the, just the capital outlay?
Correct. That's the West Middle School pool piping, very similar to what took place with East Middle School. I think it was a couple of years ago with the piping.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to accept that contract?
I'll move.
Okay, Ms. Bussie, and can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kwiatowski, any discussion on that? Okay, it's good to see that we're always, yeah, always keeping up and to make sure the schools are in shape so we don't have any big catastrophes at some point. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried seven to zero. Okay, so for our, since this is our work session, we are going to have some discussion sections. And we need to set our calendar for the rest of the year for who we want to present. So, everybody has a list of who, possibilities for people. Then these are just for our work sessions. So, in October, Mrs. Fowler, Mr. D. Pasqual, and Dr. Sivoni are going to present. And so, so if, how do we want to work this? You just want to say, we'll do this in November or this? I think if we stick to three per month, that would be good. So, do we want to, anybody want to handle this? Do we want to have Scott Furkins come in November and tell us?
Well, if you're going to have Furkins and Delbo with them.
Okay. So, we want to do that in November?
Right.
Okay. Okay, and is there another person on the list that we would like to have in November? Do we want to, there's not much going on. Do we want to see what's going on with the new food service? Want to do that in November? Okay, so we have Scott Furkins, John Delbo for our instructional technology. And he's also our social studies director and the new food service person to see how all those deliveries and everything is going. We'll have that in November.
As well as some creative ideas to...
Yes, yeah, as to what's going on. And for these different speakers, if anybody has anything specific other than, you know, the questions that we asked each of the presenters, just send them and we can just forward those. Okay, for December, do we want to hear some financials? Okay, so we'll have the finance people come in in December.
I'd like to see ENL in in December. They're part of one of our target groups.
The ENL, okay. All right, so we can, ENL, that's English New Learners. We have them at two schools?
Three.
Three schools. Okay, and so, so they can come in. They did a great presentation last year.
Yeah, it was last year, huh?
I think so, wasn't it?
It feels like it was like a month ago.
It does. I think it may have even been around the same time of the year, honestly. It could have been like November, December, yeah.
It was a great presentation.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Very enthusiastic teachers.
Yeah.
Which we have a lot of them. Okay, so, so we have financials, ENL, anybody else? We want to hear from the curriculum cabinet at that point or from Tracy to see what's going on with students.
Did we get Stephanie in yet?
No, but is much going on with community ed?
No.
No, it's all virtual.
They have a whole book out, don't they?
They have an online catalog, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is it going to change in the spring, you think?
I think there'll be a new catalog in the spring and potentially back in person.
December will be between two sports seasons as well. We may want to bring in athletics to discuss how the fall season went before we move into another season that's potentially not outside.
Okay, so do you want to do Marissa in December also? Okay, so in December, we'll have the financials, ENL, and Marissa. Okay, so what do we want to do in January?
Well, you know, also, maybe we should, do we want, like, the academies to see what's going on with that? Because I know they have to look for, like, their virtual internships, and we'll see how that's all working. And maybe the BOSI stats as well.
And reading.
Okay, so for January, yeah, and they're having the, yeah, the induction for the academy students, the new academy students, the sophomore class, they're going to have a virtual. And I know Matt and I today did a little, you know, pump-up speech that we given to them, it'll be on their video. Okay, so we want to have the academies update and the BOSI stats, see what's going on.
And then what else?
And what month is that, are you looking at?
January.
All right, because we had Dr. Merkel in already along with Marissa, right?
Yeah, last month.
Oh, yeah, yes.
So, you know, and I think we were talking about internships, too, right? He was going to work on some of that.
That's what I said, the virtual internships and stuff.
He's actually working on some in-person as well, too.
In-person. Yeah, we got word of that the other day, that some of the businesses, obviously, have to file the CDC else they wouldn't be a business. So, there was some movement in that area, which I think is great for the academies and the students.
So, do you want to wait on him, then?
Well, I think maybe, maybe we could ask Matt to check with Dr. Merkel to see where he is along that phase.
See what would be good, when would be a good month to come in?
More is less.
So, what about, like, talking to, like, Tracy, curriculum cabinet, print shop? And get all those in. It'd be nice to hear.
Oh, I'd like to hear from Jay, from this high school, and what they're, you know, what they're envisioning, what they're, you know, the struggles that they're having, you know, coming up with, you know, we've got proms coming up. We got a lot of things, again, that what's, you know...
Why don't we put the middle school and high schools together?
Yeah.
And that's four.
Do four of them?
Yeah.
For January.
Do that, and then cross out the BOSI thing?
And hopefully, that January, we're talking about everybody back in school. You know what I mean? Fingers crossed in where we're going here, but...
I pray every night, okay?
I hear you, Mary. I hear you.
All right, so the four?
Yeah, I think the four, that would be really interesting to hear them guys, what...
In January?
Yeah.
So, are we, I'm sorry, are we...
The middle and high schools, is that what you're talking about? Okay.
No, we're going to do the high schools and middle school.
In January.
Fold in BOSI stats with the high school, to be hon, if you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
And reading scores?
Uh, with the high schools, you may want to hear from the curriculum cabinet on something like that.
Cool.
Yeah.
And then do you want to do the elementaries in February?
Yeah.
See how it's going?
Sure.
Yeah, they should be a couple of months into that by then, yeah.
If it's, yeah.
Yeah, and we can ask them, because this is a different year, we usually have one month for each school. We could ask them if they want to send a representative or each of them want to come in and, and speak, you know. We'll, we'll see what they want to do.
I think it would be nice to hear from the principals so we can.
Yeah, we want them, we want them to come in.
You want each of them to come in?
Yeah, sure.
Only because I think that we can see how things are.
What they're doing and what they're planning, because each building's different.
Yeah, they'll all be excited to be able to talk about it.
Yeah.
And then possibly.
So we'll have them come in in February.
Some information, what about UPK and stuff like that? How that's gonna be work, you know, how that's working? They can.
Okay, we can.
Like now, but I'm just, you know what I'm saying? Maybe we can hear how that once we.
When the principals come in.
Maybe, I would say probably, just throwing it out there, maybe, maybe, maybe February would be good for then as well. We can fold that in with the elementary.
At least to see how it's working.
See what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, and then March?
I'd like to hear, we're gonna have to hear from the, we gotta hear from.
Yeah, we have to hear.
Print shop, music department, how, you know, whatever. I don't know if we want to wait to those guys at the end?
Well, I think we should hear from the curriculum cabinet next because.
Well, right, but I'm just saying, and put the other ones towards the end.
I think that's gonna be a full load, just a load in, in that, all on, on March.
There's quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, and I think just their, how they handled the opening, what they've learned, what they've got, where they're going, you know. I think that would be decent enough for March.
And then you said you think the reading scores will go with, along with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll do those in March.
Why don't we gonna talk about the enrollment projections for next year and staffing?
Where was that written?
I would want to hit that before March.
Yes, yeah, definitely, definitely.
I think that's leading into budget. And I just want to throw out there for, just for, if we're, if we're getting limited a little bit by three per work session, if you wanted to tack one of those onto a regular board meeting, just for your consideration, if you wanted maybe John to be able to talk a little bit about that, you certainly could, so.
Although we only spent a little over an hour on three presentations. And now we're spending a lot of time on this, which we won't have, you know, in the future. So if we want to do, you know, so do we want to do staff projections and enrollment projections in December also?
Yeah, can we, can we, can we combo that with John on that day?
We don't have a work session in December.
Oh, because, yeah, there's a.
The holiday.
Oh, we're gonna have to, what, you know, maybe it might be important to, so, try to, can we throw it in like the beginning of December or something?
Can I just ask, John, you're here right now off camera, but do you have a suggestion as to a timeframe that it might be good to talk a little bit about staffing projections for the following year?
I mean, it's typically a spring activity when we start preparing for any sort of transfers, et cetera. So I begin meeting with the principals in and around spring break time, so March, when, you know, when we start looking and preparing, usually scheduling commences right after the turn of the new year. They start getting in student request, we start making budget accommodations or determinations of what we can or cannot do, and then begin evaluating and looking at making predictions for next year's enrollment. So that's typically a spring thing. I know I spoke last month, and then you have me on for next month. Next month would be more of looking at current numbers, depending on when that work session is. Usually we'll pull the bed date number.
Mm-hmm.
And typically that's something that Mr. Brinker and I work on, at least at the secondary level, and begin to evaluate and see how were our predictions? And I could maybe even ask him if he was interested in joining me, not, not necessary, but that's something that he's also very.
Yeah, I think.
So certainly, next month as a state of the union, anytime, really. But I would say the spring to really begin, March, April-ish, maybe even March, let's say, okay, here's what we determined as our goals and priorities, and, and here is our plan moving into, you know, staffing for the following school year.
Thanks, do you think we could do that with, with curriculum cabinet, as you said, John?
Yeah, but that's, what is, what is that, March?
March, yeah.
See, I want to hear from what John was talking about a little bit, Dr. Sivoni was talking about was current students.
That's, that's in October.
He's starting that.
He can do both.
You can do them both?
In October, and then he can talk.
But the enrollment projections would be said more springtime, so more April.
I want to see what we have last year compared to this year, where we are, what we're doing.
Yeah, on, on the schedule, on this calendar thing, in October, he's listed to do the class sizes from the beds forms.
Okay.
Right, so do we want to do the April? Do we want to back it up with the curriculum cabinet, it's March or April?
Can we bump food service up a month and then squeeze it in in November? And, because we have to bump all of December.
Right, and I think with food service, we, we want her to get her feet wet a little bit too, right?
Yeah.
So maybe, that's probably not a bad idea. Right?
What?
Bring her in November? She's two, almost two full months. Or bring her in, in October, I mean, I don't know.
That might be too soon.
So you want to bump November's up to?
We gotta move all of December. December doesn't exist anymore.
Unless we set a date.
Unless we set a work session.
And what was our reason why we couldn't find a date in December?
We didn't have, we just didn't have one.
We just didn't have one because of conflict or we just never scheduled it?
We didn't schedule.
Holiday break, we didn't schedule it.
But we can.
Would have to be.
Well, how much is it gonna leave us? Is that gonna help us? Let's look.
I mean, we still have new high school electives. Can we put that with curriculum cabinet?
Yeah, we could do that with the curriculum cabinet.
Right?
Yeah, because we're having, our December meeting's December eighth.
Yeah, we could add like a 21 or 22.
Why don't we just put it on with the eighth?
Yeah, that's what we said.
Okay.
I think that's wise.
Yeah, so what are we gonna move to December eighth?
We'll just keep everything in December that we discussed.
Okay, and then just.
And then just have that the regular, regular meeting? Okay.
That works?
Yeah, that's fine.
What about Ed, he's good?
He's fine.
He's fine? He says he's fine.
All right, so then do we want to do the staff projection for 21, 22 in April then? Or do we want to attach that to March? That's what I'm asking.
Dr. Sivoni said it happens after spring break. Spring break's the first week of April, so I think we should push it into April.
Yeah, and that could go into combination with, we're looking for projections in the following year, right, with John?
Well, that, yeah, that's what it would be.
So staff projections you want in April?
Yeah.
And enrollment? Will we have enrollment by then?
Yes. Because he says he's looking at it about March.
Students we're gonna have in the building, we'll have an approximation, I'm sure.
I'll give him March and April.
And then what else do we need? Can we then put?
We said we'd add new high school electives to curriculum cabinet in March? That works?
Were you gonna hit the print shop anywhere?
We've got community ed, facility updates.
I don't think we hit Ms. Spagnolia, right?
Spagnolia, print shop, music department.
We could put the.
And, and we can do, we can do four, I mean, you know.
We also got.
So.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's put those all in April.
Is there any way that we can do music, art, PE, like all the specialties instead of just music?
Do whatever you want, absolutely.
Yeah, I just, yes, I, I made this list thinking, you know.
So what do we?
I think these four you can fit.
So what are the other ones you're adding up?
Okay, so April is going to be community ed. Which other one?
Print shop.
Print shop.
Staff projections and student projections.
No, those are in March.
Them are in March, we're talking like Tracy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right?
Yep.
I have to ask the print shop why she doesn't have any blue ink. It's all green. Notice?
Okay, so in April, we have Stephanie Wright, the print shop, Rose. And what else we have in April?
Are we gonna put a Tracy in there?
What else did you have written down?
And what about music?
Tracy and music?
Enrollment.
Yeah.
Enrollment's in there too.
Right, okay. That should be it, right?
Well, you still.
We still.
Facilities and music.
And music.
We could throw that in a May then if we had, you know what I'm saying? And then it, a lot of the project, you know, might be moving forward, we might get some updates. Because she said, when she presented, remember, she said that possibly they might be able to get a go-ahead and she could be starting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say Tracy's in April?
Tracy is in April, yes.
April, yeah, so are we doing music in there in May then?
In May, yeah.
Yeah, music and facilities in May.
Yeah, and Joe Farin in May.
No, that could just be Joe, it doesn't have to be.
It could be Joe, but he can.
Depending on where you may want it, but yeah.
Yeah, for just what's going on in the buildings.
It'll give us time to, to put together like we reviewed beforehand of the questions, anything that we're gonna have prior to.
So, Dr. Merkel, are we going to leave him for January or do we want to add him into May and then we can find out how the whole?
Well, Matt was gonna check to see how, you know, when, when he might want to speak.
Especially when his things are gonna start to develop, we're gonna see what's happening.
Okay, so he's a question mark.
This is a fluid plan.
Yes, oh, yeah. Everything changes whenever, yeah, no. Okay, so I will, if I got all my notes right.
What about review board goals?
Send this, oh.
Only thing we didn't touch.
Should do that in January?
I think that should be done soon.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll review board goals in January. All right, so I'll write this up and then let me know your feedback as to if I got it all right.
Just send it to us.
Who knows, yes. Can't wait for this year to be over. No, um, okay. And, okay, so 5B, is there any, I mean, we, I guess as each month comes, if there's any additional information, any additional data that you want from the different presenters, if you can just send this and I'll forward it to Matt, you can forward it to the presenters.
I think the way that we've been doing it fairly well is communicating, let our board members know what's coming out. And then, as anything, they've been requesting what they'd like to see. I think that's how we got to CARM's data and anything else. And then this way we give them ample amount of time to get it ready before, you know, the last day.
Okay. All right, so the presenter's info will do that on a month-to-month basis.
Yes.
Okay, we need to discuss when we're going to, what we're going to do about the public coming in. So Larry said he would do this, so I don't have to keep talking.
Okay, so we've wanted to tackle a topic that we feel is very important amongst the board, and I feel that we need to communicate with our stakeholders. Obviously, the size of this room is something that is restrained, that we cannot get enough people in here. So Matt and his staff has basically done some measuring downstairs into the slash auditorium slash lunchroom. Just so everybody's well aware, we're able to fit about 25 people in there, including us board members.
Yeah, being respectful with the 50 person.
Yes, so that is going to be our goal for our next meeting, okay? Is to get the public in for public comments, attending meetings, and getting engaged. The things that we need to bring up here and we need to discuss are a lottery, a first-come, first-served. How are we gonna come up with an idea that's fair to everybody to submit to allow who to come? Well, because we're limited. So I imagine the influx is gonna be pretty heavy in the beginning. I would anticipate, maybe we won't get 25, maybe we'll get 10, that we can let all 10 come. But there'll be some stipulations and some things that what we have to set by CDC guidelines and our procedures of what we want to be able to do. So I think to be as transparent as possible, I don't feel that we should probably do a lottery for the first time and see where we stand with the amount of people. So they would submit their name by a certain date, certain time, and that would be publicated through gen, right? We would do many posts.
Yeah, actually Nicole's done a little bit of homework on a mechanism, almost like a calendaring way that people could submit, submit the information, which, I mean, we can get some more information, but she was just talking to me about that a little bit today. So the way that would kind of, you know, put it in basically, people would say, hey, I'd like to come, so.
Okay. So we'll get to the format of how we're gonna conduct it after that, I think. And what we'll worry about is I want to kind of get into what we should do with the public. We want to get to the feelings, the questions of taking a temperature at the door with people coming in or a questionnaire prior? Do we want to do both? Or do we want to do one? I mean, the temperature could change. If I'm putting in my request on a Thursday for a Tuesday meeting, I'm fine then. Over the weekend, I'm not, not great. So I think we need to kind of do both. I think we need to submit the form, and then I think we need to have a temper, a temperature check downstairs.
Can we just do the form when they come in?
Yeah.
Just have the forms available here? So you have current information?
We possibly could, yeah, that would probably be better, you know.
That's how you do it for Erie County Schools.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how we did it for Bosie's, or for the Erie County School Board's training, is you filled out the form when you got there, you got zapped from the forehead and.
Okay.
To enter the room.
Yeah, having them come with that form and then just, you know, taking their temperature there.
Or we can just have copies of the form here.
Mm-hmm.
All right, now if they wear masks.
We're gonna get to that, yeah.
What about us, then, do we have to during the meeting?
We will be spaced far apart enough, and so will they at their tables.
Because I find it difficult.
It'll be like, once they come into a restaurant, they will wear their mask while they're in the building. Once they get to their designated area, they can sit down and take off their mask. Yes, it's easier for everybody to respond and to talk like that. I think basically also, I think we'll have some hand sanitizers and things at tables.
Yeah.
Just for, you know, I think for anything that we can have. I think the thing's a security guard, is that something that we're looking to have?
Yeah, it's a greeter, essentially, somebody that, whether they're taking the form or just keeping tally on how many people have shown up, or if we create like a list, basically saying, okay, yes, you.
And we would have somebody from CSEA taking temperatures.
I was gonna say, who's taking tops?
Honestly, right now, I mean, you probably could use the, the security guard to be able to do that.
Okay.
Right now, our bus drivers do it for our students.
Okay, and I think another question we have is we do have family members that come together. So how are we feeling about family members, members sitting together?
I think that's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Everybody good with that? Same family members?
Same household, yes.
Like a husband and wife team, college or whatever.
Right.
I have concerns about having 25 people in the room and not requiring them to wear their masks when we're asking children who are in schools to wear a mask for eight hours a day. No, but the.
Rules are right.
We're six feet apart.
They should be as well.
They will be.
As well, but they are in our school building, so I feel like they should conform to our New York State guidelines. If our kids have to wear masks in the school? That, I mean, if we send our children to school, they have to sit there for six and a half hours wearing a mask.
They have to wear them everywhere they go, I mean, I'm sure.
Unless you're eating.
Huh?
Unless you're eating, we could serve food.
Yeah, we could serve probably snacks. Yeah, I, I just don't want to be a hypocrite and sit here with no mask on or a mask on and tell them they have to have a mask on. I'm, I'm trying to kind of really present it almost like when you walk into a restaurant. The COVID won't catch you while you're sitting down, but it'll catch you in the air while you're walking.
I'm not going to restaurants.
Yeah.
I don't want to expose myself to 25 unknown people breathing.
Okay. So, I mean, this is something that, why we have this open discussion on what we're gonna do with this and how we want to handle it. I mean, we, we're in our position because of safety right now. So I'm, I'm in a position to where I would say I would feel fine with making people wear a mask. I believe they're doing it at town hall anyways right now when they attend. So if that's one added layer of protection, maybe that's something we need to implement. So I, I'm looking for some more feedback.
No problem if it comes down with wearing a mask, everybody wears a mask.
I'll wear my mask.
Just gonna say, I don't have a problem wearing one either, to be quite honest with you. I just want to put that out there, so.
I think you just opened yourself up with that many people. In the school building, under the regulations we've been given, they should be wearing.
Do you want us to wear them too? I mean, it's.
Well, the first question I have is, are we gonna line up the way we have a normal board meeting down there in the cafeteria? Are we just sitting at the table like that?
Straight across?
I think it's the worst possible scenario to be holding a board meeting.
I think you could, yeah, I think you could maybe bend the tables out, you know, kind of horseshoe them just a little bit.
Isn't there a stage?
We could be on the stage.
We could be on the stage, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's a better idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should be on.
The, the stage?
Similar to this?
The only thing, we, we would want to just measure a little bit, that's not a super deep stage. Not to say it couldn't be done, I would just want to make sure that we could still maintain some social distance.
We can figure that part out, I mean.
Yeah, but the air is funny on the stage. I used to teach on that stage and, you know, it's very confining, so I hope.
If our children were in school, if our children were participating in orchestras.
Get a couple fans.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just saying as long as we can still.
I'd be willing to wear a mask if we can actually have a meeting where we're talking like this. I'm so against meeting in the cafeteria.
I guess what, I'm saying whether you're on the stage or there may be room for us to be able to just horseshoe out, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
That may be able to happen on the floor or on the stage is all I was getting at, so. That may be able to happen on the floor or on the stage is all I was getting at, so.
Well, if we do it on the stage, it might give a little bit more opportunity for more people to spread out. Do you know what I'm saying? That way maybe.
But is there room on the stage for us to be six feet apart?
And it's stuffy, I'm just telling you.
I guess, I guess my question about this whole thing is, a lot of people want to come to the school board meeting. Um, not to be part of our conversation necessarily about who we're, who we're going to have as presenters. Who we're going to have, um, young and right discuss, I mean, I, I believe there's a lot of requests to come to the school board meeting to either voice.
I'm gonna get to, yeah, I got, I, I haven't even gotten to that part. I just want to get down the basic parts and then go through the fundamentals of how we're going to conduct it, how we're going to take the questions, how we're going to do them live, what are we going to do?
Understood.
Okay, yeah.
Where I'm going from this is why does, why does this format necessarily have to change? We've got the video, I'm still in fighting for a way for people to email, ask live questions. Why were we maybe leaning towards more of a couple of forums and invite people to come in? And it could even be multiple, a couple of chefs in an evening where we sit there and talk to them, listen to them. More than setting up this whole thing where now we're moving all our board meetings down to the cafeteria. I mean, the biggest concern of you, I think, if you're to poll everybody is why do you want to have public people at the board meeting is there's a lot of people that are happy with our situation, a lot of people unhappy. So that's just, I'm just throwing it out there right now, that's, and I'll let you guys.
What about?
Do we want to try it one month and see how many people show up?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, at our board meetings, we have not, I mean, and this was before all of this happened, we have, you know, historically have not gotten a lot of people at board meetings.
Last couple of years, maybe a handful of people, and I'm not putting it down because everyone's got a lot of stuff, which is why we wanted to record it and put it up there. So what, what I'm asking is, do we want to consider more of a short-term solution to hear people with issues? It doesn't have to be an entire board meeting. Can it be a forum at the beginning? You've had forums where we've had people and, and you've had great discussions. I think it's, I think we need to see people in person, um, but does it have to be the entire? Like again, there's a lot of stuff that people don't necessarily want to.
Well, maybe, maybe, Ed, you're, you're touching on a good point here. Maybe we can come up with an idea of maybe of a town hall. A little bit maybe of where we just open it up, same type of number of people or whatever we're doing, instead of having a, and just let them voice their, you know, what, what's, tell us how we're doing, tell us what we're doing, what, you know, how things are working. Um, I think by not at least, um, hearing and allowing people to voice their concerns. I mean, we've asked to email questions and there were some delays and not getting them quick enough and so we've got to find a way and I, and I.
But don't we address this in five F?
Well, I didn't mean to skip ahead, I apologize.
Yeah.
But.
What did we address in five F?
Well, the ser- surveys and forums, you know, are we going to do those? And, and also, you know, for questions people have, do we as board members have all the answers to those questions?
No.
But maybe.
You know, so we would need administrators and the superintendent, you know, so.
I was wondering, can we consider opening the next board meeting up? Doing what we're doing, try it one time, but do a sign up or the lottery, what we're discussing. But I think future board meetings should be back in the room and I think once we've given a lot of people a chance to, you know. I don't even want to say vent because there's people with questions. I don't think people want to come and necessarily complain, they want to come and get some more face-to-face questions, and they might even be uncomfortable to email because you're not always able to understand it. So I, I'm, I'm just thinking though, if we also do the board meeting, but we do a four, again, I don't mean to skip ahead. But I, I just, I really, really think our board meetings are, are good to have and I want, and we could still fit how many people in this room.
Well, could we fit five, five more if they were spaced?
Right, that's what I'm saying, we could fit some people.
So you could see if they're for the first five.
Right, so we could try the first downstairs and see what happens.
At our meetings, but I also think if we hold our next board meeting and that's the first opportunity to public is to come, we might have a lot more people that want to come, so that would lead to five.
Well, I, I think if we get with Scott and we talk with our IT, I've watched some other forums where they just call in on, 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 uh, live on Zoom. You know, and we can maybe put them on the Google, um, doing our Google meet to where they just basically link in. They sit in a waiting area and you just let them in slowly to ask their questions and it could be addressed. And instead of coming to the meeting, you know, I mean, it's just another option. I'd hate to have a parent come here at eight, nine o'clock, seven, eight o'clock at night to ask one question when it's at the end of the meeting or it's something that they could just do from their house.
Well, when, when Matt had the forum with the, um, the PTA presidents and, and vice presidents. Um, John and Carm, um, had their computers and they were, if people, you know, wrote in and asked questions and they answered the questions right there. So we could always do something like that in the future.
And how did it, how did it go, John?
I mean, I thought it went well, I'd say just, it's just, I guess for a board meeting would just be confirming the identity, right? People were just asking general questions and we were able to address that.
Right.
Well, Ed brings.
Be able to do that here.
Well, Ed, and I think we've all brought up some good points here is that we don't know how minimal or how big the questions are and all questions are important, especially when they're coming from our stakeholders. So I think we definitely gonna need to find a way to get answers. And I think one or a possible different ways is town hall, going downstairs, staying in here. We've got to come up with something to move this forward. And to limit it and say, we're going to try it once, I think we need to try and figure it out, right? I don't want to, I don't want to say we're gonna, well, that didn't work and that's the end of that.
Larry, I think if we do a town hall, to be perfectly honest, I think maybe one of the high school auditoriums would be.
Now we're thinking, there's what, nine hundred or eight hundred?
But you're, again, you're talking about fifty people. You're still being respectful of the fifty-person limit, so.
Yeah, but at least it's better than twenty-five, so you, you, I mean, if you had a town hall or you can do one on the east side and one on the west side or whatever, or two different nights or something, just so.
You know what, if we schedule one and fifty people turn out and five hundred people say, I wanted it, well, maybe that means we need to have a couple more.
And I guess, do you have thoughts in terms of topics for the town hall? That's, that's all I would ask too.
I would think some of it would be just Q and A of what the public, you know, what, what they're looking for and I'm pretty sure, you know, there's some interesting questions and things that, you know. I think we should probably, yeah.
I would almost think the forum would be based on the fact that we have had the public limited to the board meetings and there was some frustration about that. So now here's your chance to come, let's get caught up.
Yeah, and I think we've.
There's nothing better in this world than when I've had you explain to me something. Uh, when you answer my questions, email, I get, I sometimes don't, I'm confused, like, there's nothing better than when you stand there, Ed.
Face-to-face.
Yeah, like, and you, I don't want to say you're the king of it, but I really.
I would just want to be prepared, Ed, because if it was, if it's every topic in the district, I'll be honest with you, I may need to bring some other people in to answer any questions.
You better bring your rolodex.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's also no rule that says you have to have an answer for everything asked.
Right.
Just the fact that it's asked, you know what?
I would just recommend a focus, that's all.
Yeah, we should focus it, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, we could have topics and things that go on with it, but I think some, and what we've heard the last time was through the emails from the last board meeting, some people just want to be heard.
That's why I said.
That's, you know what I mean? They wanted to make their statement, they wanted to be heard and they wanted to get that message out there. And I think when.
They just want to vent their concerns and, and ask questions and basically.
Well, as, as us board members, we sit here and we listen and we listen, and that's basically been our job is to listen. Really not to jump in on a lot of things and get caught up in things, but we hear you. Okay, and that's one of the things that we're, we're doing here is that we hear you, but if you don't communicate to somebody and tell them we hear you, they don't know. So I think that's something that we've got to be able to, to really, you know, get down and I believe there has to be parameters. On, you know, this is a focus on student achievement or student, you know, you know, where we're going with this or a different topic of transportation or hybrid or not hybrid. I think there's a, a bunch of different ideas because you can still get your message out.
We can institute the parking lot. If someone asks why, you know, I mean, if there's a topic that seems to be coming up and we can, I mean, I, it doesn't cost us a whole lot besides our, and our time is valuable. But it doesn't cost us a whole lot to do a forum. Um, I mean, it.
So are we leaning towards just having an informational meeting than just tie, than, than being at a board, board meeting? Because I also, we've got to find a, we've also.
Well, it has to be open.
Right, we got to find a way to at least answer the questions from the, the agenda.
I mean, if.
Not many.
Well, I was saying just about five more, but why, why don't we wait, uh, until January? I mean, have a forum ahead of time. No, no, oh, Ed, have, have a forum ahead of time, somewhere like in a school auditorium. But, uh, before we shift all of our equipment and all of the things from our boardroom, let's wait and see what happens with the virus by January and then, you know. And if we have to move to a gymnasium, then we will, but in the meantime, all our equipment's here and everything.
Yeah, but I think in, I think we need the public to come in now.
Yeah.
I, I just think people are, have unrest.
Sure, again.
And so can we try to have our next meeting down in the gym? And have a sign up and see how many people show up, you know, how many people want to sign up for it and then gauge from there what we want to do with future.
I mean, by Saturday at midnight or something like that.
Right, right, yes.
You could do something as simple as like a free e-bike ticket and there's twenty-five tickets available and the first twenty-five people that sign up. Or, or however you decide to do it.
So, so when we leave this meeting tonight, we are making, I mean, know that we are making an effort and we're going to achieve our goal to be public next meeting.
But we also have to let people know, I mean, the, the general parameters that we followed.
Have to be the CDC.
People get three minutes to speak.
Okay.
So they can't come in and, you know.
So I, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna throw this out here and I'll be done. Could we say we're gonna open the public up to the board meeting, do a sign up sheet, see how many people sign up? Start with first come, first served. If five people sign up, we don't have.
Well, I, I, but I don't want to do first come, first served right away because I repeat, the people work during the day and they're not going to be able to, I think the lottery is the most fair way in the beginning.
Okay, let, oh, yeah, I said, let me, so here's my, let me just, if I was, if I was king of the world. Um, I would like to have a sign up for the board meeting, let's see what the thing is.
Interest is.
Eight people, then we don't have to worry about moving it.
Right, right.
But I would also like to schedule a forum, even if it's the day before the board meeting.
Okay.
Because I think that will take care of a lot of, I don't necessarily think people necessarily want to sit here and they, they don't have questions about some of the basic stuff we deal with. They have questions, you know, I mean, think about the last two years, how many people have come to the board meeting with questions about like young and right, uh, you know, not a lot. So I'm just thinking about the, the, the forum, which will give the majority of the people a chance to speak or be heard. And then if we have a hundred people want to come to our board meeting, then we, you know, we have to move, we have to move them to the other. But we don't have to pick the spot tonight for the board meeting, we can say, we need to open the public. But on a side note, I want to figure out a way to get people who don't want to personally attend to ask questions, a way, a way that works, that, you know, works for everybody.
So we're going to determine this based on how many people?
How many people are interested in coming to the board meeting?
I'm fine with that.
Compared to a forum.
Okay.
I think we can find, I know we can find a way with the Google meet, that if we were able to supply a link, that they would be able to call in and ask a question. Because the email part's not working.
I understand that, but if they're comfortable, either they can email, I mean, Google in, they can shut their camera off if they, or choose not to show their face. But at least be able to project because I know like when I do my BOSI's meeting, we, we have people Googling in, you know, because we can't fit them all in the room. Presenters and stuff like that, so they, they are right on the screen, so somehow can we get parents to be able to Google in or have a Google, whatever. And their faces could be there or they could choose not to be and just be a letter, you know what I'm saying? And they can answer a question.
Yeah, but if they, if people who come, public comes, they have to give their name and address and be present.
Well, they can give it, and they can give it, oh, I see what you're saying, so they wouldn't have to be on the.
Now, I mean, and, and again, I've got another topic about people that want to support, you know, when they email a board and stuff or send a letter. Uh, but I do know we have that rule, is that, is that a, that's a rule, right? You have to give a name and address?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And be here, okay, so I.
So, you're right, so then if they do Google in, they have to give their name and address to make sure they're in their district.
I don't know what the rules are.
And the same rules would be.
Can't we just make that determination, we find out how many people are interested in showing up?
Yeah.
It's either here, downstairs, or one of the high schools.
I will tell you that we can make either, I mean, we can, downstairs can work if you wanted to, that's not going to be a problem. I think you've spelled out ninety percent of the parameters already.
Yeah.
I think it's workable either way. I do think the board tables can be adjusted, we can adjust tables so that everybody can see each other, because I agree with you, Ed, it's, the, the line is top, you're like leaning down a way.
We're putting on a show with that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Please keep us off.
This is better than what the line is, I agree.
Keep us off that stage, please.
So, so do we want to say people have to respond by, say, Monday night?
Well, I think that's gonna be, it's gonna have to, don't forget, because if we have twenty-five, now we gotta move. If we only have ten, we can, you know, you know what I mean, so I would try to get it by like Friday at midnight or something like that.
But the agendas and that don't go out till Friday.
Oh, they go off Friday at midnight.
They go Friday at midnight.
I agree with Monday, I don't know how hard.
How about Sunday, Sunday at midnight?
Sunday, that's what I was gonna say, Sunday night.
Sunday at midnight?
It's fine, and honestly, it's just a matter of you plan to do it and if we don't have to move, then we don't have to move, that's the way I would approach it.
That's good.
That works.
Thanks, Larry, for.
So is everybody in agreement, we're gonna make every, we're, we're going forward allowing the public to, okay, okay. We'll find a way.
Forum too, or?
Pardon?
Be transparent.
We want to wait and see what the outcome is.
Let's find out with the.
You want to go before, open the seat, let's just start.
Bugs are coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we need to.
I got bit.
In all honesty, there, that email I addressed.
They can still use that.
Is still active, so those of you watching at home, throw in your ideas.
Yeah, I mean, that email address, uh, Diane, email on that address, Diane and Matt can have that on there.
Yes, we, we just got on.
And questions could come to that email.
Right, no, I'm saying right now.
Yeah, and I, I will just say, sometimes the emails, we, there, we've responded to every question and many cases, they're very child-specific.
Right.
And it's a, you know what, this isn't something that we would ever read at a board meeting so much as it is. If a parent that just sees a venue to get support and we reach out to them, so.
But man, I think when we put it out that we're opening up the meetings, we put the same rules that you have to read every time about no names.
We used to do that, yeah.
And then just put that as a disclosure and then they can, you know, so they're not bringing up, uh.
Kids, yes.
Sure, sure. I think sometimes people just see an email address and say, hey, I need help with something, help me, so, and I'm more than happy to do it. Sometimes, you know, you know, as opposed to saying, hey, following our own, you know, procedure, we'll get back to you within twenty-four hours with the answer. You have it in front, you're like, I don't want to, I'm just gonna email this parent or call him or something and just say, hey, you know, and, and work through whatever issue they're having.
Right, and I, I know I promoted that as a email if you wanted questions read, so I was a little confused. Um, which I was gonna bring up at some point, board emails. I was wondering if we could discuss that, like, as part of this?
Like, what, what do you mean, board emails?
People email us, um.
As the public, the stakeholders?
Say, say, uh, I'm sorry?
The stakeholders emailing us, okay.
So, so say someone emails us, all of us, um, you know, Diane, Jan, it's all addressed to the Board of Education and it goes out to seven of us. My understanding is typically we leave that for the president to reply.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
To address it.
To address it, yeah, which is.
We talk amongst ourselves, if we have the opportunity before about that email, we convey our feelings to our president and then she speaks on behalf.
So where I, and, and this might be just me, if everyone else does this, I don't reply at all, like not even, I got it, Diane, it's been forwarded to Diane, thank you for your email. Should I, or should we, do we do that? Do we acknowledge receipt?
Well, we, we didn't when all the emails, we got a whole bunch of emails about sports.
Right.
And people wanted, you know, the sports and we hadn't made a decision at that point and so we didn't respond to those.
Correct, and I didn't either, I don't think any of us did.
Right, right.
No, I, I did, I responded to a couple just regarding that no decision has been made. It was basically the blanket statement that you put out, Matt, and it was just saying, we hear you, but it was another thing. It's, you know, we don't speak a lot on stuff until we know the facts. I can't say anything about sports, CDC says what it is, then they're really the dictator of it, so. But acknowledgement that it was received is very nice.
Right, so that's what I was wondering is, and it, and it is maybe in our board policy book, but if we get an email to the group. Um, I, I would all, if it's a group email, I would almost think all we need is one response.
Correct.
Saying, you know, whether it be, depending on who's, you know, able to do it, Larry or Diane. Um, uh, one response, we've received your email, um, and we, you know.
And, and I did send, for, for some of the beginning sports ones, I did send, thank you for your email, the board is, you know, working with, you know, everybody else. If, if it's about an individual student that has a, the parent has a concern, I will forward those to Matt.
Okay, do you?
And then Matt will respond.
Do you forward them?
Yeah, do you acknowledge that, um, thank you so much, I, I, um, for your concerns, I'm forwarding it to the superintendent or the right person it's supposed to be, or do you not acknowledge it?
I don't know, and I'm, and I'm trying to think.
You really haven't.
I really haven't forwarded a lot to you.
Because we both get them?
We both get them, yeah.
And if it's, in many cases, they're like, they're operational or whatever, so what I will do is I reply, I'll copy Diane and say, we received your question, and I copy and paste the question. And then say, basically, here's the answer to your question, so that Diane's on the email, she's involved in it. The person's question is restated because it comes, if I just hit reply, it goes back to like a weird server. It does, so I literally have to email the person, it's almost like a forward, and then I put the actual.
Right, and if you, and if you've noticed, we've been getting, uh, Diane's response forwarded.
Oh, yeah.
So that's nice, but it, but it's that, but it's that, right, well, here was it is, it comes to them too, Matt goes, I got this one, Diane says, I have this one.
Okay.
So, and then they kind of collaborate and then Diane would then hit reply to all for all of us on the response.
Okay.
So, but it's the three hours, two hours, four hours, eight minutes while it's waiting there. Does that person know that you got it?
Right.
So I, I, I get that automatic response.
So I was, even if we did that.
We could actually put on the automatic response if anybody emails you.
For the bounce back.
Yeah, we could, if you think about that.
Ed.
Yeah, then your, your email has been received.
Or even a read receipt, your email has been read.
That's something that we can look at.
I would, I would be okay with that.
You could do that, we can, we can all change our, our settings on here to do that.
Oh, you, you can help me with that.
Okay.
I mean, the bouncing, I could actually say that the board president or the board officers respond to, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I get personal phone calls and my answer always is, I really thank them for their interest, I thank them for, you know, calling and I said, everything's a work in progress. And, and by saying that, at least we acknowledge that they were interested, you know, but I do get quite a few phone calls, but I just tell them that everything's a work in progress.
Diane, write that down about the automatic response for emails.
No, but if they call you.
Yeah, I, I understand.
I know we're talking about changing our page, um, on the website, well, again, I was thinking of having a spot on there, so instead of that and them having to email all of us, like individually, like, you know, again, I hate to, because I know what the email is, but Board of Edu, you know, one spot to click and email to us. Go, you know, this will be, with a little description, this will be sent to the president.
So you want a BO seven, like what we have on our email?
Yeah, yeah.
What happens if, or what if an individual just wants to email?
They can, there's a, you can click on the name and do it, but I was just thinking.
Are you looking like a quick link, just to email everybody?
Quick link, it goes to you, copies us in, but it also says, right in the quick link, this will be emailed to, directly to the president and the board will be copied in.
We're gonna have a lot of different emails, email for.
Yeah.
For this, this.
I don't think so.
I, I would just, to Pete's point, I will say that you, you, you're checking a lot of inboxes, that is one thing that you, I guess you want to be sensitive to, you don't want to have I would just, to Pete's point, I will say that you, you're checking a lot of inboxes. That is one thing that you, I guess you want to be sensitive to. You don't want to have four email inboxes to check. It's nice when they all come to your regular.
To your central location.
That's all I would say. That's, I've had to navigate that a little bit, and it does get to me.
And we don't get a lot of emails regularly. We did for the sports. And so even for, you know, the hybrid and things like that, we haven't gotten a lot of questions.
You just jinxed us.
Form initially when we did it, we responded to a lot of, which is, went through and responded in the actual forums themselves. But you're right, there's not a ton of.
Yeah, we don't get a ton of.
Of whatever town.
And again, this is just, this may be just a technology thing where it, it goes to my, it goes to Diane and it copies us in, instead of them typing in each individual email. That's all I'm saying. Because I don't know.
Like a group.
Like a group thing. I don't know.
Yeah, they call it a quick link, and that's all it is. It's just booming your.
So that's like a technology.
That's a, that's a, that's an easy.
So what we're saying, if we get email, every one of us gets an email, Diane or Larry, if she does it, makes Larry, either one of them respond, we don't respond. Correct?
Right.
Unless it's just to you, unless it's a personal thing that somebody's asking you.
Well, it's kind of tricky though, Diane, too, because some, um, public officials or public stakeholders will do blind copy. So it seems like it's you, but it's not you.
Yes, okay.
So I, I definitely think that what we need to do is examine of doing the automatic response. I think that will be, A, your, your receipt that you, your email was accepted, and then that point, everybody who's designated to respond.
Will respond.
Will respond. And then we CC the response to the individual. And it just makes it a little bit easier. But I think it takes a way that, that, did they get it? Did they not get it?
Yeah, because I had a few people just approached me and were like, I sent you an email and I never heard back, but it was like the same email. And again, I love reading them. I just didn't want to reply back without, I know we have.
Right. No, that's, it makes, it's.
What, what do you do with your personal phone calls that come to you?
I kept hour-long conversations.
No, but I mean, yeah. I refer them to.
Yeah. I, I mean, I always appreciate what they call.
You just refer them to the, yeah, you refer them to the appropriate person, depending on what issue they have.
Right, and it depends, yeah. If it's a board.
I know that we can never give, we can never give an answer because we're one of seven.
The majority of them, say that again?
I said, I know each of us can never give an answer because we're one of seven. No, no, I mean, you can't decide for, you know, and I don't decide, no.
You'll just give information.
I always say it's a work in progress.
How do I contact the advisor of this club or something?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so here you go. Here's the club page. Here's the link.
Yeah.
There you go. Like, I give information like that all the time.
Yeah. Okay, so did we decide we're going?
Yeah, we're having public in October.
And in October, and then.
We can always announce, um, if they're gonna be the mask or not. We'll go over all that and figure that all out.
Right.
It's not hard to put on their mask. Must be required, but we'll figure out depending on what we got and where we are, but.
And then people are gonna respond by Sunday night if they want to come, and then we'll figure out by lottery who actually will be coming.
And then we'll find a way to have virtual questions.
Yes, absolutely. That's most important.
Who will handle that?
I think what we need to do is get with Scott and kind of maybe think about what, how we're trying to challenge our need and what we need to do.
Just go back to the virtual questions again, just not to belabor the point, but we just, if it's somebody looking to have a statement read or something, I think we just have to be careful. Because if you read one, you're gonna have to read them all, and like, I think.
Well, at this point, though, I mean, it's almost, Matt, as, as, we need to hear them all.
Oh, I agree, but I'm saying, first of all, you don't know if the person who says that they're emailing you is who they say they are. You also have concerns too that somebody could be saying, I want you to read the first chapter of Huck Finn or something like that, too. So I just, I'm not trying to be absurd about it. I am just trying to say that some.
Well, then when, well, then when the public sends in their request, be passionate about why you need to be here. Yeah.
I thought, I thought.
Okay, are we set with that then? You know?
Yeah, we're good.
Yes, right. Yeah.
Facilitating it?
Questions and, okay.
You know, if, if there's people looking to just call and make statements just to cause trouble, you know, we gotta work through it. But I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, I know where yours is coming from, but I think if we find a way for people to, I think we, there's gotta be a way of.
I just wouldn't want somebody to misrepresent who's our I.
We can work on.
Right. So we can work on all the logistics of all of that. Okay, just a couple other things, because I know Larry has to leave. For the budget involvement, do we, you know, how involved do we want to be? Do we, Larry and I did sit, sit down with Brian and Jan, and they kind of went through, you know, where we're at and, and what's going on. Um, and so how involved does the rest of the board want to be, um, in this whole pro, in the, in the process? Anybody have any thoughts, or you want to think about it and get back to me?
Well, I think what I can tell some of the board members of what we've done, what we have doing and what we are continuously doing, um, a lot of things are still not final because things are still coming in and where we are. We are closed out, from what Brian said, on a lot of issues. But, uh, we have other things that we're still waiting on for, because we don't know yet. Um, so we have to, um, still get the rest of the information to kind of really, before we can start. But I think at least officers or anybody else that would be willing to be involved into it, I think operational costs, things that we can control, and there's things that we cannot control right now by contract, by value of anything. So, uh, I think we, we need to discuss our, amongst ourselves here, what we're going to do and how we're gonna proceed. And what is really, you know, where are we gonna be in five years? Where are we gonna be? Waiting on it. Are we gonna be cut twenty percent? You know, where, where, is it gonna be better? Is it gonna be worse? Are we gonna get FEMA in time before? Is that a two-year or three-year? I mean, there, there's a lot more than just, you know, we, we did okay, you know what I mean? But now you're getting into other things where we, you, our budget did not, you know, entail Plexiglas for buses, you know, twenty people on a bus. Yeah, dividers. I mean, there's.
Sanitizers or thermometers.
Yeah, I, I mean, so, I mean, but now, but a logical person will say, though, that, that, okay, that absorbed the pencils, the books, and, you know. So there are things that go along, along the way, but, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think that this district's got a kind of, uh, we need to really find out what is our, gonna be our goal in the next five to ten years? That's where your operational costs are gonna, you know, do we start now moving towards that way?
I think the board should meet and discuss some of these ideas.
Yeah. The two of you continue planning on meeting with Jan and Brian? Because I don't think the seven of us have to be in that room, but as long as.
We bring back the information.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I'm sure some of us would like to be involved in some capacity, but right now, as long as you're moving forward in some capacity.
Because the discussion we had was just a very general discussion. Wasn't a lot of specifics.
So that they said the budget's fine for this whole year, right?
For this, this year, we're, we're. Right, right.
As a board.
So, right, so going forward, right.
District has to give us suggestions on where they think.
When do we have the final nineteen-twenty budget numbers, final?
In terms of closing things out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we are closing things out.
Yeah, they're almost there. There's things that are happening with New York State that they're waiting on before you can.
Is there ever, um, can the board ever get a report on that? Do you guys see it or anything like?
We have it. They're still generating.
Compared to projections?
They're, they're generating what they have now, um, and it's, it's still a work in progress, but it is coming. It has to be within the next three weeks, four weeks.
I'd just be curious how that looks. I've never looked at one before. Like, I know we always look at the projections before we have the year, but I've never seen anything after. Like, you know, oh, you know, Matt, you, you won a million dollars over on tents. You know, you're just, you know, it doesn't need to be that specific, but I'd be curious how we, how we do with our projections compared to the reality.
Yeah, and we have some financials. If you notice, in December, we're looking to have Brian and Jan to be able to discuss some of these things. One of the other things I think I would throw out there, too, which I think is very important, is just, it, it is identifying priorities. Like, I know the board back a couple of years ago talked about offering more electives. That was something. BOCs, getting more kids to BOCs. You know, I mean, when the board says, this is something we want to be able to make a priority, getting Chromebooks, Larry, remember we talked about that? Uh, we didn't know there was a pandemic coming, but we wanted Chromebooks, and holy cow, did that get expedited.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was nice. And, and anything that comes with this, where we're going, is operational, is cost, but, you know, uh, as anybody of us know, the heat's not on, the lights are not always on, so we are doing, but it's minimal compared to what, you know, the long term is.
I just think it's, it's important not to lose focus on that. Like, I've talked a lot about reducing class sizes at the elementary level, especially starting with the primary grades, because I think those are your foundational years. But, you know, it's a balanced approach to being able to support all of our students, and sometimes it comes in, you know, as sort of like a whole bunch of things at the same time. Carmen was talking about, or seal it by literacy, the capstone project you're talking, those are enrichment opportunities. I'm talking about, you know, things that actually would potentially.
We've worked hard to get to this point.
Reduce the level of need for AIS and special education programming by supporting kids early on, like those sorts of things.
And those are very important, but if the buck, if the state comes down, what cuts on us, we're going to have to.
Where are we gonna cut?
I could tell you, I could tell you this, Mary. This board will be active, and they will understand where the low-hanging fruit is. And then we gotta start talking about what programs, if that comes to that. God, I hope not.
I hope it's not that.
But we all need to realize that at some point, it's.
But there's, yes, we all have to make some.
But we will have and we will be involved in this.
Education piece is the last that we touch.
Oh, yes. Oh, definitely. That's what we're here for.
Have the conversation now. I don't want to have to have a meeting saying, oh, look, we're out of money.
No.
Right, right.
Let's cut random things to save money and get us through two years.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then we'll bring it all back, and we'll, we'll discuss what we've always done before. And every board member can, is gonna have to make their own decisions. Hopefully, we'll be talking about adding, you know, things that, what we've wanted to continue to do, right? So.
So are we gonna know when you guys are meeting with Brian and Jan?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We'll, we'll set something up and then.
I would throw it out there, and I'm not necessarily the one, but if there was a board member, a third member who wanted to join you guys, I would be okay with someone throwing their name in the hat or.
Yeah, as long as we don't have four. Can't have four.
Right. Well, yeah, I'm just saying.
Listen, the more, either A, we're gonna bring the message back and we're all gonna discuss it, but if another person wants to come, who are we to stand in their way? Right, I mean, yeah. They're all, any board member is always welcome.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you want to stop by on a date?
I don't even know about that rule. Is that rule for board members? Is it just as long as they're?
Can't make decisions.
You can't, you can't make decisions.
It just puts yourself in a bad spot.
Well, I'm saying, if, if, if.
Just looks bad.
Yeah, it just looks bad. But I'm saying, I don't think it's necessarily a rule on, if we were meeting with Brian and Jan to learn things, we wouldn't be discussing.
We could just. Be very careful not to be definitive in any of your statements.
Yeah.
Right. Can't say anything positive.
But if there was a board member saying, especially with you being newer and you wanting to get involved, I would be, I'm just gonna, I'd be okay with someone with you joining, or Mary.
So we'll start with Larry and I. We'll let you know when we're gonna meet. Uh, for Super Eval, um, do three people want to meet? And, um, we didn't really, a lot of the questions in, in last year's evaluation were kind of repetitive and didn't get to the point that we wanted to get to. So does anybody want to get together, um, to revamp those questions?
How many people are we looking for on the committee?
Three.
Oh, three or four, you know, whatever.
Probably three, so we don't put ourselves.
Well, it's, you know, I, I don't think you're gonna have more than three. I don't think people are clamoring to do this, but, you know.
Diane, when we, oh, I'm sorry. When we met, remember, we have to finish some of the stuff that we didn't finish, um, when the board just met. So what I'm saying, was part of that questions, weren't we going to put part of those questions? Wasn't that one of them about the eval questions?
I don't understand what you mean. What?
All right, last time, when we had our.
Right, right. We had, right, we had a number of things in our parking lot, yeah.
Right. So we still have to finish that. So we have to set a date for that. But what I'm saying, wasn't part of that, um, the questions that we thought could be on the evaluation?
That's what we're looking at.
I think it was, I think they weren't exact questions that we wanted to put on, and that's why we're looking here
Okay.
to see if people want to look at what the questions that were asked were and customize them more to us.
Did you get a hold of Super Eval to ask them if we could?
Yeah, you can change it. You can change it.
Taking custom.
Yeah. I think what we should do is that we should, everybody, what we should do quickly is probably get the printout one, look at what we had before and say, well, this really doesn't tailor to us. This should be more driven towards that way and that situation.
Okay, so do you want everybody to evaluate the questions to start off with? To see, this was a good question? This was not what we want to get at?
I don't think it was hard, but yeah, I, I would really think it would be a little bit easier that would.
Can we find out from Super Eval if they can, if they have questions in groupings or something like that?
Do they have like, yeah, do they have like twenty-five questions, but they only inserted four? So is there a random?
Oh, I, I could.
Yeah, like a question bank.
I could ask.
Right. You know, on each topic, they might have fifty, and they only put in, you know, ten on each one.
And then maybe Diane, you could send us them, and then we can review.
Right.
I think that's what the committee's for.
Right.
Like, you want to be on the committee?
No, I'm still on the committee for.
Me and Mary are already committed up right now.
Yeah, we're committed.
Are you looking to be on the committee?
I just volunteered for another committee.
Oh, okay.
Well, I want to also be on that committee, too. So I already told them.
Okay, so why don't we individually look at the Super Eval, since it doesn't seem like, um, you know, people are clamoring to do this, and then we can look at those questions. Okay, so, and. Do, when, do we want to schedule a forum?
I think it's.
For November? Do we want to have a topic? What do we want to do?
If we do November, it's gotta be early or late in November.
I was thinking like October twelfth-ish.
It's a school holiday.
Well, that's gonna be the, our next board meeting.
Yeah.
Our board meetings are thirteen. Yeah.
Make that determination.
So we want to see how the public, you know, that comes to our meeting in October, how they go, and then we can decide from there whether we want to have a meeting.
We don't do that.
Okay. Um, and, um, for staff communication, do we want to? You know, I was thinking of sending out an email from the president of the board and saying, you know, we appreciate all that the staff has been doing, um, you know, and keep up the good work, something like that. Do we want that kind of communication to go out from the board occasionally? Or is that not needed? What do we think?
Um, I like it. I like the idea. I know some board, other board presidents do send out, I know Renee does, Wilson, she sends a monthly one out to, you know, address things and, and actually let the, um, staff and that know what's going on, you know.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you do one, you do stuff like that, right?
Yeah, Matt does it. But I mean, to come from the board.
Right, right.
Just communicating to staff?
To the whole staff, yeah.
Just whatever's going on, or just, hey, thank you. May I, maybe I misunderstood.
I mean, initially, just to say, you know, thanks for a good start to the year and, you know, and that. And, you know, we can discuss at our meetings what, you know, if, if you want to do things in the future, if you want to do specific things, to send out a communication, but just to let, let them know we're here.
A little bit of support.
I, I think any positive support, you know, is appreciated.
Yes, right, right, yes.
They've all been under a lot of, a lot of stress.
Yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, we, we talk a lot, so I think that's a benefit.
Yeah, I see a lot of your messages and, and her messages combined.
Yeah, Diane, we talk, actually, just on the phone, just to call, just to bounce things.
And I will tell you, one thing, I mean, it's really great to, again, the little bit I walk through the house hearing the, the teachers and the different staff, and then the people delivering the food to my house, like, I mean, they already know everything about my kids, and it's great seeing that. The other thing I notice is really great is the groups of Facebook parents that have gotten together, and when someone has a question, how they're all just jumping in and helping each other.
That remote learning group.
Yeah. There's some remote learning, have you been in that or seen any of them?
No.
So there's a whole bunch of remote learning groups that these parents have formed.
Very positive.
From each school. And there's, I, you know, I don't want to give anyone in trouble, but there are some teachers that are Facebook people that are involved in, someone will literally go on there and ask a question, and there'll be twenty parents jumping in with, I could help you with this, or, I mean, even if it's a simple thing, as my kid can't figure this out. So much help. It's amazing how the community, you know that phrase, it takes a village?
Yeah.
Well, not only do we have our staff going above and beyond, we have our whole community of parents that have just, I mean, it's amazing to see. I know you're not a Facebook guy.
Take, take an ownership, yeah.
But yeah, but even the teachers that are on Facebook are right there, like jumping in, they're putting their, you know, they're putting themselves out there, and so it's really cool to see everybody come together.
The administrator in the beginning set the rule that it was not going to be negative. And so it was really great to see so many positives.
No, I'm talking about, this is the private groups.
No, I'm talking, oh, no, I'm on it. That's on site, yeah.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Okay, do we have any other issues that anybody wants to discuss? Matt, did you want to discuss a couple things?
Five, surveys. Did we, did we want to put out a survey to the parents and community?
Um, about?
I don't know.
How's it going?
Similar to the forum, forums, I guess. Did we want to do that, or we're just gonna use the forum?
Whatever we want to do.
Okay.
And again, if we want to do a survey, you know, so anybody want to put it together? What kind of survey do we want? What kind of questions do we want to ask? What, what information?
I'll be on that committee.
You know, why are we looking for information from the parents? Cause I know Matt is sending one out, um, that he gave us a copy of for, um.
We'll chat in a second here.
Yeah. So he'll tell us about it shortly. Um, okay.
But I think the one that, maybe you're talking about is maybe something from, and that's where we can ask if people want a town hall. Maybe that could be part of the survey, asking, you know, what is a board?
A little bit more community minded.
Yes.
Or, or if we had forums, what do you wanna discuss at a forum?
Questions. I think that, that to me, that defines your focal point. Like, I just, again, it's, I'd hate to stand there and, okay, jeez, you know what, I'm really gonna have to, I know we have a person, I mean, again, I'm not gonna micromanage every corner of the district, and if somebody has a question, I'd like to give them an answer to it. So if some, you, you put it out. I've seen other districts do this before. Interest inventory almost. What interest, what topics are you interested in learning more about? And then you can sort of pick them off a little bit, so.
So, so if you're gonna talk about your thing, could I form a committee to work out a survey for us then? Yeah, get a couple people on it?
Sure.
Okay. I'll take it over from here then. And then, well, you're gonna talk about your thing.
Okay, now also to, with that, um, what about what I brought up before about finishing the rest of our, um, questions from our retreat?
Yeah, do we wanna do that at the next work session, or? I don't remember. I don't know if I have the.
Another thing, cause we had like four more questions we had to finish.
I think there was four.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't remember.
We get rid of that parking lot and we don't have to keep.
Yeah.
Can we, can someone define parking lot? I've heard people ask me, what's the parking lot? And I don't know, I know what it is, but I don't know how to explain it.
The parking lot is when all these questions were coming in, we, we formed a parking lot where we could put those all in there to address at a, a later date.
Cause they would take us off topic, you know, like we normally do.
I'm just, for the greater pleasure, for the greater.
All right, that's the end of that.
I'm healthy. Took the screen and everything. Took the screen and everything this morning. I'm good. Every day.
Excellent.
Okay, so let's look at the parking lot and see if there's some of those that we didn't discuss today.
Yeah, there was like four.
Okay, all right. And.
Come up with a date.
Yeah, come up with a date. Okay.
And then send some dates out, if you don't mind, then we can.
Okay, all right. Uh, Matt, did you wanna discuss a couple of things?
I, I did as a matter of fact, actually. So, you know, a couple of areas of focus, and I actually did send out some communication to our staff yesterday a little bit, just to, you know, kinda, kinda define, I guess, our scope in terms of how we're looking to be able to move forward. After having some conversations, you know, just with our board in terms of priorities, one of the areas that we were very much interested in being able to bring back into campus for in-person support and instruction is gonna be students that are participating in their education in like self-contained classroom settings. So just obviously that, you're talking specifically focusing on like students that participate in like your six-one-one programs, that's six students, no more than six students, one staff member, one teacher, or one teacher, one teacher aide, 12-one-one, uh, you know, right up through high school. These are students that do tend to have some intense needs that we do feel it's important for them to be able to come back in. Uh, we were looking, honestly, we wanted to try to be able to target, you know, toward the end of October to be able to find a way to be able to bring them back in to our campuses for in-person instruction and support. Uh, another area that we targeted too, which is a much broader group, and I'm, I'm kinda getting to the chase on this a little bit, was elementary in general. Uh, looking at our elementary students, because that has been consistently identified as students that, you know, require typically speaking, more support in logging into their classrooms, uh, Google-wise, you know, independently, especially at the primary grades, uh, as being an area that's identified. And it's not to say that secondary or, or your six through 12, uh, don't need that same, don't need support, don't benefit from this, but being able to prioritize our resources and our focus, starting off with your K-5, all right? We're looking at UPK as well, um, and trying to have that in place, probably in a similar timeframe to the students in self-contained classrooms. Um, but one of the things that we have to be able to keep in mind here too, is that we're utilizing all of our teachers to the maximum capacity. When you look at districts that are, you know, uh, have hybrid models going on around the area, you know, typically speaking, what you're seeing is it's either an every-other-day model, or it's four days a week, two days on, uh, and then, you know, two days where they're learning independently, or they're learning, uh, through some sort of remote mechanism. Problem is, you've got one set of teachers. So we didn't hold anybody back. We said, when we developed our schedules, we said, what we want is all of our teachers to be, uh, interacting with students to the maximum degree possible. So with that said, if we start, when we start, bringing our students back in, whether it be elementary or middle school, high school, there will need to necessarily be some sort of adjustments to our current schedules. One of the first things that we will need to be able to do though, is assess how many students, uh, or how many families would like their kids to still maintain fully remote, uh, instruction, all right? And that's something that we still have to do. We have an obligation to be able to do that. So, uh, that's where we talked about potentially putting out a survey to our families, similar to the one in August, or I'm sorry, in July that we put out, but this we would define a little bit more in terms of, you know, students that are coming back would be in some form of a hybrid model. We're also, one of the things, once we have those numbers, uh, we want to be able to form a committee. We've spoken with our elementary principals about this, and this would include K-5, including East Middle School, fifth grade. Um, so, and that's obviously included Dr. Lockren as well, uh, and Mr. McKeller over at East Middle School, just to, to clarify that for everyone. But for us to be able to do that, you've got one set of teachers that we're working with, and one set of teachers that are gonna be able to interact with students. One of, I will tell you, the goal needs to be daily meaningful interaction with educators, with our teachers, all right? Because I can tell you that that's not always the case, and I think that we need to make that a priority for our students. So when those committees, we talk about board members, families, parents, you know, teachers, members from our Civil Service Employees Association, our administrators, um, you know, people getting together to be able to sit and talk about what that might look like, uh, for our students. So as we speak right now, we've developed some possibilities in terms of hybrid type approaches, right? Because at this point in time, for the foreseeable future, we don't have the ability to bring back all of our students at the same time, not with six feet of social distancing around everyone. So that's where we're gonna need to make some level of adjustments to our schedules. And one of the things that, that, you know, I'm putting out there is that it could mean at the elementary level, if you have a, a 200 students that, you know, at the elementary level, I'm saying that number arbitrarily, but they want to remain fully remote. Let's say it's 150. You look at the scattering of grade levels, you may need to reassign some teacher duties to be able to cover those fully remotely, because we don't have any extra teachers. All of our teachers are being currently utilized right now. If we held some in reserve, that means we would have driven up our class sizes. Um, so what we did was we scheduled basically as if we were fully in session right now in person. That's how we scheduled for all of our levels right now. And that's where we created what I think is a very strong remote model, but we all know that we want to get kids back in person. So we started off by basically, I'm saying, giving the Cadillac of all remote models, because we said, why would we hold back? So now, some of the things that could happen potentially though, would be somebody's classroom teacher may have to change. Um, we may have to adjust instructional contact time throughout the course of the day, so that we can equitably divide, you know. And it's not to say that necessarily the student who is, you know, in person one day, the next day is gonna have a full, you know, 8:30 in the morning till 2 o'clock in the afternoon schedule, as is the case in some cases, or, you know, it, it's gonna be the same two-hour block of time that they're interacting with their teachers, there, but potentially, there's gonna need to be some adjustments to the schedule, so. And I know that doesn't always sit well with people, but we need to be upfront with people, given our resources. And I don't know that we're in the position right now to go out and hire a whole bunch of teachers to be able to accommodate that. You have three groups to consider. You've got your cohort A potentially, cohort B, and then you've got your fully remote. Your fully remote, you can, yeah, your C group, um, not, not, not including like your self-contained students, all right? Because honestly, I, I, we're working to try to be able to bring them back in four to five days a week, frankly.
But I think, um, wait, I'm sorry, um, when Karen was talking about her, you know, in contact with other districts and getting information, I think, and you would probably be chairing a committee, I would assume, right?
John and Karen.
Yeah. So anyways, I think that would, getting all those stakeholders in, and like I said to you when I called you earlier, I wouldn't like to be the third person if like Peter or someone else didn't wanna take it. I think getting all that information together and sitting down with all those collective, uh, minds, we could come up with hopefully, um, a great program that we can, you know, bring out. But I think the survey, and I want, um, cause we're still on, I know I did hear people that were, they were upset with the last survey, you know, we did get some letters, all of us did. Um, so this right here will help us to move towards that. Do you see what I'm saying? Instead of, um, you know, this is a way to get the district information to see where A, B, and C falls in.
Right.
At our legislative meeting, a big topic was rapid testing, and, uh, this is gonna be an emphasis, and we did contact some of the legislators, uh, since that meeting. And, uh, it's now coming to us where we are gonna have the ability and the financial backing, some of it, for the ta, rapid testing, which will help if we get cases. Because when you're having to shut down for two weeks or put people in quarantine for two weeks, uh, in the hybrid thing, it really is a disaster, a disaster. And, uh, you've seen schools closing down, like Niagara Falls, Maple Elementary and so forth. So the rapid testing will help us when that comes in. And, uh, that's, I just want you guys to know that the legislative committee is really working hard on that, and we've contacted the legislators. Also, I'm gonna have to leave. There's a sign for everybody, and this is from, uh, you're all supposed to take this sign from, um, the Bo sees, and this is a political sign for you guys. And, uh, there's one for everybody. It says October is.
Yeah, October.
School Board Appreciation Month. We outed a school board member who resides here. And that's from Erie County.
Do we wanna know it now?
So if you want anyone to know that, please take your sign. And, uh, there's also a, a wire to go with it too, so.
Okay, yeah, just leave them there and.
So they're there here. Okay, thanks, everybody. I'm gonna go.
Thanks, Jen.
I might watch something, so. He's escaping.
I, I would just say, in the event that, you know, let's just say we're back and we do have to, you know, if, and on the unfortunate circumstance, we're a class or group, I think that the preparation that we've done thus far in terms of getting ready and, and really honing our skills at remote learning will serve us well. I just wanna say that, so.
Okay, anything else you wanted to discuss or?
This, this is a, I, I just, I wanna put this out there. The way, I guess, that I'm conceptualizing this is we just want the information to start from, but then we really do wanna have some genuine dialogue with our folks. When I say our folks, I've talked about the people that we're having there. Board members alike being able to say, this is what it could look like. I mean, I'll be honest, just full disclosure, we've looked at models that literally have half-day hybrid, where there's the morning and then there's the afternoon, and that, to me, that actually, from an equity standpoint, is great. You're really interacting, I think, in a meaningful way on a regular basis. The problem is daycare, all right? I, that's, that's, that's huge, all right? There's three-quarter, cause Karen just does that, and Karen is like a scheduling, you know, ninja. She creates these things, then there's the full day, but the full day presents the challenge of, on those off days, who is interacting with the kids? And that's the conversation we need to have. That's where we need to hear. We know that people value the in-person, right? It's not always just about, the sense I'm getting is just the number of minutes of instructional time. It's about the, the, the interaction and how it takes place, the modality. So that's just something I think we all need to be sensitive to, um, and I think responsive to as well. Cause I know that people have very strong feelings about this, and I, to be quite honest with you, I haven't heard an argument that hasn't been convincing, to be quite honest with you, when you talk about remote versus hybrid versus fully in-person. I've not heard an argument so far that has not been convincing to me. So, I mean, I just, we, we need to be able to send out a survey but be upfront with our families. But the survey does not mail us down to a decision. What the survey does is inform people that there's the potential for some changes, potential, for some changes. The survey gives us an idea. I don't know that we're gonna be inundated with people saying, we want the fully remote model. I just need to have a sense of what that might be before we can move any further down the road.
And I, I just wanna throw this out there for a point. The last time we did the survey, we were all under the impression, certain rules were gonna be going out. And then it changed, the, from the governor and the, the people above us, changed the rules, which basically made the survey null and void.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to get that out there, because a lot of people think, why did you bother doing the survey if you weren't gonna listen to us? But the survey was based on one route we.
The guidance came out and changed, you know, several times within a two-week period.
Yeah.
And substantially, not just in a small way. And I think that's where it's not so much, it, it just got to the point where we said, wow, what, what are we really trying to do here? So, but I think, you know, we.
Please take the time.
I think it's gonna be less abstract, to be quite honest, when you start talking about hybrid. What, what really is remote learning? Because one of the things that I heard from people through the spring and over the summer was, you know what, I love the effort that everybody put in at trying to connect with us remotely, but it was kind of all over the place. Not getting that feedback now. There are still people that are contacting me, and I get it, I mean, multiple times a week. Hey, this is working, but we still wanna be in-person. It's not that they're disputing, they're saying the value in what we're doing, but they're saying, okay, let's continue. We wanna honor our, what we said, we wanna try to be able to do back in August. The message hasn't changed. We wanna get people back in, um, and honestly, from the elementary standpoint, we'd like to do that in November. That's what we're looking for. So, I mean, is it an ambitious timeframe? It is, but that's what we are looking for.
I hope so.
So, and that's the conversation we've been having. So we really want to make this happen. Um, I could, I could talk for a lot longer if you let me.
Can I ask two, we have, so as board, we have copies of said survey.
Yes.
Can we add two things to it?
Sure, what are you thinking?
Add bus, add transportation questions, so you don't have to go back into Power School and find the tiny little bus. Um, and maybe consider pre-K too, as a grade level listed on here?
Thank you. You know, pre-K, actually, the reason we did this, cause pre-K teachers, as we speak, and this is just in district, are reaching out to families this week and asking. So we're looking for a couple of days a week to start off possibly mid to late October, just to start off with that. So, that's the reason we left pre-K off, but I do like the bus.
The bus, it's only for, um, parents, you're only fill it out if they only want remote, so they wouldn't need.
Oh, so the survey's only to be filled out if you want 100% remote?
Right, as we work to transition students back in, if you still want your child at home, then you still have.
Okay, so this survey's going out to everybody, but only fill it out if you want 100%.
We're targeting L, we're targeting K through five in this particular situation.
I was thinking everyone's filling out.
It says it right here, remote.
Yeah, I know, I just don't read properly.
I didn't read it either. When this survey goes out, maybe their contact person, maybe this is questions they ask when they make their contacts with the due date on here, is, did you receive the survey in your, cause if they don't fill it out, you're going to assume they want hybrid, or they just had a bad email address.
Yeah.
Right, so we're gonna assume hybrid.
We're gonna assume that you wanna be in-person and hybrid unless we hear otherwise from you. That's the way we're looking at it.
Out of hybrids, basically.
Yes, correct.
But not for the year.
Not for.
What, what, the way we're framing it is, you know, just from, again, a scheduling standpoint, to say, listen, we wouldn't rule out, if, if, you know, basically, if we come back fully in-person, then we would wanna say, yes, absolutely, like, you know, come on in, okay? But just, you know, think about it from the timeframe we're setting this up.
The survey, if you want, let us know that you will not wanna be coming back at this point.
Correct.
Okay, great.
But if we make it a survey that everybody's required to fill out, we get all of the answers then. We get the bus answers, cause otherwise you're, okay, this is how many people want remote. Two weeks later, we're sending out a new survey about, do you want the bus? Do you really want the bus? Yes, bus?
I hear what you're saying. I just, I'm confused. I, I wanna, I wanna be careful not to confuse people with too many questions on the survey. I just, I wanna hear just from the people in this case who wanna be back and we can, cause you're absolutely right, Jody. We're gonna wanna know. There're gonna, gonna be people that are gonna say, I'm transporting. And I tell you what, Linda O'Grady wants that information. One of the reasons, and I think I may have mentioned this in one of my forums, that the transportation survey was not, it didn't work very well last time, was because we hadn't done what's called a rollover in Power School. It's a big deal in Power School. We've done that now. So I, and we're also, we're gonna have a little bit more time to test this out. We did test it last time, but not to the extent we normally would when we'd roll something that large out. I'm talking fast, cause I'm trying to be respectful of everybody's time, but, um, so that's something that we absolutely will need to be able to do.
Okay. All right, are we all set? Any other comments, issues, questions? Okay, well, I hope everybody has, um, a safe couple of weeks till we see you again, and, um, you know, enjoy the great discussion we've had this evening. I love these work sessions. So, um, everybody be safe.
Can, can I just say, I, I wanna disagree with you, Diane. I love the dialogue, that this is, this is, to me, the back and forth and just asking questions. This is, this isn't just a presentation. I think this is what board meetings need to be. I'm just, it's my little soapbox, but thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And thank everybody for their participation tonight. Okay, have a good night.
Make the motion.
Motion.
Oh, can we make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll sign it.
All right, and, um, any discussion? All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried six to zero.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.